Good evening. This is the May 16th, 2019 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, meeting in Town Council Chambers, now 7:01 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And will the members please introduce yourselves, starting on my right?
Ryan Tonnant, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Bruno Maiene, Commissioner.
Leanna Brosi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Walisi, Secretary.
Michael Riley, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Minister.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Thank you. Item number three, organizational administrative matters, we have none. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing or open application?
Absolutely.
Mr. Leniker.
Good evening. Can you hear this? This is recorded.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Joel Leniker. I reside at 70 Huntingtown Road. I'd like to only make a comment about Route 25 blight. If we, I didn't have an opportunity to do a little photo audit for you, which I had presented on the screen, but if you start from the beginning of Route 25, we come into the first building on your left-hand side, it has now been tagged by graffiti. The site has been cleared and some of it has been removed. Across from that, there is topsoil and a huge mound of dirt that sat there for probably two years that came off of another site that appears across from Duchess Diner, that's sitting there with who knows what is going to be done. I do not, did not have a time to read your conditions of approval on the site that appears opposite the Duchess Diner, behind Dunkin' Donuts, which I believe at last I knew was a Keeler property. I might suggest in the future that if you're going to remove topsoil off that site, if that's a condition and you're going to run it down at the end of Route 25 and then dump it in a big old pile and have weeds growing up on it, that that might not be the best condition of approval. We go farther up Route 25 and then you come to the Babaline site, which there was a huge sign that represented each of the businesses in that site. That sign has collapsed, been hit by a car, whatever, sitting alongside the road. It's been there for two and a half months now, or maybe a month and a half, excuse me. We go further up to Eastern Road meets Route 25 near the Stepney Green and you have a parcel at Four Eastern Road of which one of the buildings, the roof has completely rotted off of it, the roof rafteries have been showing, and now the main house is going to be in the same condition. You go farther up the road and you go opposite Northbrook and there has been a property there that also has graffiti all over it. The building is falling down and nothing has been improved. Now, we also have the Route 25 project that appears near the Sippin Building, which I realize that's a state project, but barrels have been blown around for two years there. The project may or may not get done. I would urge you to send a note to the state of Connecticut. And I realize you may not have much power over that, but at least if you could have a letter on record saying, "Would you please get this project done or please start expediting it?" I realize that they just shut down the road and they made headway to build that bridge so that water could run underneath it, and that's a great improvement and congratulations to them. But if you're going to talk about economic development in these times on Route 25, it is abysmal. All right? Most of you who have known me, I don't show up at these meetings very often, but I am tired of driving up Route 25 looking terrible. Now, I do realize that there is a big problem to enforce blight. I get it. I understand that's a gray area. I did just read your revised regulations. And yes, they are much clearer than when I used to sit on this board and congratulations to you for that. The other item is light pollution. All right? So the property at the intersection of Route 25 and Eastern Road, which is owned by the Ganem property, I want to note, all the wall packs that went up on those buildings, did they get permits for those? There must be 10 wall packs in that little shop, that little shopping area. All right? That's where it used to be Stepney Liquors, it's now, what is it? Wine, something or other. In addition to that, the Light the Night program, which is a state program, they put those big, huge light fixtures on those telephone poles and they are not within compliance in the state regs for night skylighting. The light blows everywhere. In addition to light being trespassed onto uncom, traffic coming up Route 25 north right in your eyes. We all know that that intersection is a huge intersection for accidents and that lighting does not promote it. So you put all those things together, but then in the other points, right in across the street has beautiful light fixtures that are all pointing down, that are all cut off at night. You get to see the property, you get to see where you're going, where you're shopping. It's wonderful. Okay? So to your credit, you have made new businesses that have come into town improve their night skylighting. Kudos to all of you for that. And it is duly noted by many of us. Okay? It looks great. But then we have these other properties who, I realize they're owners that have had them for many years. I realize the history of many of these owners that don't care about getting permits. I realize the trouble to have to go back and enforce all of this. I get all of that. But now collectively, you put all these things together and it is really bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leniker. Anyone else who would like to address the Commission? Seeing none of them on general appointments, we have none. Public hearings. Item number six, SUV 2019-01, 104 Elm Street. That has been postponed at the request of the applicant to June 6th. Item number seven, SUV 2019-02, File Number 1266C, Bybridge Road. That also has been postponed by the request of the applicant to June 6th. We have one new public hearing. First, I'll read the instructions for a public hearing. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and procedures of hearing. Orders of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer Commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if any answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the Commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application appropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. All right, so Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, noticed a public hearing to be held May 16th, 2019. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 7th Pan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, May 6th, 2019, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2019-05, File Number 1006E, Zoning Regulation Text Amendments, Proposed Business 3 District, B3. Applicant Proposed Zoning Text Amendment Petition, Seeking the Establishment of a new but unmapped retail-oriented Business District 3, B3, which new B3 zoning district is proposed substantially mirroring existing B1 and B2 districts in regard to permitted principal and accessory uses while establishing new B3 district-specific lot and bulk standards. The introduction of three new uses, including commercial long-term parking, indoor cultivation facility, and power generation and commercial utility facility is proposed to be defined and regulated per the petition's proposed zoning text amendments. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are unfiled and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. This was published twice in voices on Wednesday, May 1st, 2019, and Wednesday, May 8th, 2019.
I just wanted to note for the record that the written notice that you're reading from said, "Notice of the Public Hearing to be Held May 16th, 2019", and then in the first sentence it says, "May 6th", but the actual legal notices that were in the newspaper were correct. They both noted May 16th in both locations.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit 1, Regulation Amendment Petition. Exhibit 2, Adjacent Miss Pal referral notices. Exhibit 3, Regional Planning Agency Referral Notices. Exhibit 4, Certified Mail Receipts for Department of Public Health and Aquarian Notification. Exhibit 5, Acknowledgement of Referral Receipt by Non-Talk Valley Regional Plan Agency. Exhibit 6, Draft Metro Cog Response to Referral. Exhibit 7, AOT PNC Comments. Exhibit 8, Progred Valley Response to Referral Comments. Exhibit 9, Newtown Response to Referral Comments. Exhibit 10, Foodutac Watershed Association Letter. Exhibit 11, Metro Cog Response to Referral. Exhibit 12, West Cog Response to Referral. And Exhibit 13, a Revised Metro Cog Response to Referral. That is all.
Where the applicant?
Good evening, Members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located here at 501 Main Street in Monroe. With me here this evening are the Principals of Kimball Family Investments, LLC, the applicant, and also Robin Pearson, our Zoning and Land Use Council with Alter and Pearson. So I'm going to run through the proposed application. We actually have a kind of multi-tiered presentation for you this evening. We want to run through our proposed language, talk through that. And in our application, we do discuss that this could potentially apply to the Stevenson Lumber property. This Commission may remember, we actually came before you for an informal discussion about that property in December of last year. We then had, I believe, two meetings with the Regulation Subcommittee Meeting and through a lot of those discussions, we received a lot of feedback and then we ended up making the application before you.
I'd just like, for the record, to say that we did have meetings with you and Mr. Kimball regarding a specific piece of property and some potential uses for that property. The Commission, at that time, agreed that in order to maybe fully or provide some future development there, we would have to look at some zoning changes. But the Commission, other than Mr. Kimball stating some potential uses that he had in mind, the Commission really never had any in-depth discussion about future uses for the property. We agreed that something would have to be looked at.
Agreed and acknowledged. I wasn't trying to infer or insinuate anything to the contrary. All I'm simply stating is that the application, you know, to remind the Commission, we did come before you in December. We did go through Regulation Subcommittee and this is somewhat a, you know, a result of a lot of those discussions. It is not an exact summary of what's been discussed and we understand that, but I wanted to just, you know, this is the result of a couple of different things. So I want to talk through our proposed regulation itself, talk through how it could potentially apply to a particular piece of property and some of the components of that, and then also review with the Commission the comments from staff which we received last week. I know the new format is, rather than provide a response at the hearing, we want to actually discuss those items and provide some dialogue and some narrative. So we're excited to be here tonight to talk about this and we do think it's a good application, but we're looking forward to the discussion. So just the Town of Monroe, so what we've proposed is a regulation amendment to create a new district in the community, a B3 district. Now, we aren't creating, with this, didn't include an actual zone change for a specific piece of property. From a process standpoint, this would simply create a B3 district in the community. Then, once that's adopted into the regulations, someone would need to come before the Commission with an actual zone change to apply this B3 district to a piece of property in the Town of Monroe or multiple pieces of property in the Town of Monroe. So by adopting this regulation, it simply creates a mechanism for a zone change to be applied to a specific piece of property. Just from a sequential standpoint, we wanted to, that's the path that we wanted to take. So zoning map for the Town of Monroe and our proposed language. So we modify a number of different portions of the regulations to address our regulation amendment in its entirety. I'm going to go through all those point by point for the record. So we're creating three new zoning terms under 2.21, the general zoning terms. And as part of our application, we are proposing to create three new uses which would be permitted within the B3 district. So we are creating definitions for those. Commercial long-term parking, any lot, land, parcel, building, or structure used for the temporary storage or parking of trucks, commercial vehicles, tractor-trailers, boats, RVs, construction equipment, or parts thereof. Parking spaces are to be leased under a formal agreement with a minimum timeframe of at least 30 days. Indoor cultivation facility, the inside, vertical, and/or horizontal growing of crops by method of conventional horticulture, hydroponics, or aquaponics, including the storing, processing, and sale of agricultural and horticultural products and commodities originating from the property where said activities occur, except as may otherwise be permitted by these regulations. And three, power generation and commercial utility facility. Any lot, land, parcel, building, or structure used for the production of energy by solar, wind, natural gas, and biomass, as well as substation, transmission, and support facilities. So those would be three new uses we would be proposing to be allowed in the community, which are not currently contemplated in the regulations and those would apply to the potential B3 districts. We'd amend 4.1.3D, outdoor storage of materials related to commercial uses, and we would look to modify that. The outdoor storage area shall not exceed 20% of the gross floor area of the principal building with new text, with the exception of parcels in the B3 district. Now, just, we're going to talk through all this and then we're going to have a nice, long discussion about some of our proposed language and the Commission's thoughts on that, just to put that out there. Replace Section 4.3 as follows. The regulations in Section 4, they talk about B1. B2 is 4.1 and 4.2, and then the industrial uses are 4.3. So we'd be moving 4.3 industrial uses to a 4.4. That's part of our regulation amendment and creating 4.3, which is the establishment of the Business District, B3. So we modeled this language similar to how the B1 and the B2 districts are modifying some bulk requirements to be more reflective of this type of zone and how this could potentially be applied. So application of provisions, the standards, regulations, and requirements as set forth in 4.3 shall apply to the use of land, buildings, and other structures, and the location and bulk of buildings and other structures in any lands classified as Business 3, B3 district. Permitted uses. See Article 10, Schedules for Scheduled Permitted Land Uses by Zoning District. We're going to run through those. 4.33 accessory uses. Accessory uses, building or structures customarily incidental to a principal use are allowed in a B3 district, including those same accessory uses permitted in the B1 and B2. 4.3.4, Lot Area and Bulk Dimensional Requirements for Business 3 District. No lot shall be used and no building or other structure shall be constructed or altered for use except in conformance with the following minimum standards. So we created another table for dimensional requirements for B3 district. Again, this was mimicked off of the B1 and B2 in terms of format, but we modified some of these requirements to be more appropriate for the type of property that we'd be looking for. So lot requirements, B3. Minimum lot area, 10 acres, which is much larger than what's permitted in the B1 and B2. This is consistent with how the zoning regulations actually break out uses in the I1, I2, and I3 districts, where the I3 district has a much larger parcel size requirement. Minimum lot frontage, 200 feet. Minimum square, 250 by 250. Minimum front yard, 50 feet. Minimum yard at a residential zone boundary of 50 feet. Rear and side, 20 feet. Maximum building height, 2 and 1/2 stories or 35 feet, which is consistent with the other business districts. Building coverage, 25%. Minimum floor area, 1,400 square feet. So we mimicked and we matched the same table format. We just modified some of those areas. Landscaping and screening, 4.3.5. Landscaping and screening requirements in the B3 district shall be the same as those in the B1 and B2 district as described in 4.1.6, 6.2, and other sections of these regulations. Parking and loading, parking and loading requirements in the B3 district shall be the same as those in the B1, B2 district as described in 4.1.7, 6.1, and other sections of these regulations. Uses permitted within minimum front yard setbacks. The following uses may be approved by the Commission, shall be permitted within the minimum front yard setbacks established in 4.1.5 of these regulations, subject to all the requirements set forth in these regulations applicable to uses and structures in a B3 district. We simply mimicked, this is essentially a carryover from what's currently in the B1 and B2 districts. We haven't made any modifications to those. We would just simply have those applied to B3. When we get to the review of staff comments, there are some comments specific to some of these languages that we're going to talk through at that time.
Just for the record, that's really just B2. The B1 is, I think, less. One, maybe A, is in B.
Okay, was that something that was?
There's no gas stations in B.
In B1, that's only in a B2. Okay, so yeah, so we did mimic this, take it from the B2 regulations. Thank you, Will. Now, the Schedule Permitted, Schedule Permitted Uses by Land Use. So we've added a B3 column to here and we've tried to mimic the same uses to, in some fashion. So accessory drive-throughs, it's permitted in the B1, B2, and LOR. We're including that in the B3. Art studio gallery included in B1, B2, including in B3. So we really looked at what's permitted in the B1 and the B2 and tried to mimic that. That generally applies to all of the uses on this table. So art studio gallery, automobile service shop, automobile sales, banks, boat campers, RV trailers, brew pub, car wash, health club spa, fraternal organization. Moving on, commercial long-term parking lot. This is a new use that we'd be defining that'd be specific to the B3 and it would only be allowed as a special exception permit use in the B3 and it would not apply to any other districts. Conservation open space, similar to all the uses as an SEP. Contractors, building trades, establishment, that's a use that's permitted in the B2. We'd also be proposing to have that allowed in the B3. Daycare services, adult daycare, child daycare, allowed in the B3. Firewood process facilities is a permitted use in the I2. We'd also include that into the B3 district. Funeral home or mortuary permitted in the commercial zones, putting it in this district as well. Gas station permitted in the B2, an LOR, and also a B3. Hospital allowed in the B3. Hotel allowed in the B3. Indoor cultivation facility, we're adding this to the B3 use. It really comes back to an agricultural use, which as you can see right now, agricultural uses are only permitted in the residential districts. But we feel that the use that we're talking about would be appropriate for a B3 district and I think there's a big trend going in that direction. We're going to talk about it a little bit more as we get to the response to some of staff comments. Instructional retail martial arts, again, something that's allowed by site plan, site development plan and the commercial uses. We'd also apply that to the B3. Laundromat, dry cleaners, permitted in the business uses. We'd put in the B3 as well. Manufacturing and industrial, these are uses that are permitted in the I1, 2, and 3 district. We're also providing and proposing for the B3 district. And I'm going to talk through that in detail. A lot of that has to do with the property that we're most interested in, Stevenson Lumber. That's a property that has manufacturing industrial use that's grandfathered to that property. So I'm going to talk through that a little bit more, but that's why we're proposing for the B3 district. And the real purpose of this is to give the Commission some additional controls where you can have additional oversight for what goes into this potential property than what would otherwise be permitted from a simple grandfathered-in of uses that are already permitted and have been permitted on that property for generations or for decades. Moving on, medical clinic, urgent care facilities allowed in the commercial uses, allowed in the B3 district. Medical rehabilitation facility, allowed in the commercial uses, allowed in the B3. Museum, and again, the rest of these, museum, office, medical and dental, office general, office professional. Outdoor sales of accessory play equipment and sheds, personal service buildings, all commercial uses, proposing for the B3. Pet groomer business, B3. Place of religious worship permitted in the residential and business zones, proposing it here as well. Power generation and commercial utility facility is a use that we think's appropriate for one of these potential properties, so we're all proposing in the B3. Recreation facilities, including those in the Business District, consistent with the other commercial uses. Research and development facilities, consistent with other commercial uses, permitted in the B3. And then residential, none of those residential uses would be permitted in the zone consistent with the rest of the commercial and industrial zones. Restaurant food-related uses, again, we mimic the same uses that are permitted in the commercial B1, B2, and LOR districts for all the restaurant food uses, for all the retail uses. Riding academies only in residential, not in B3. Schools, public and private, consistent with the other commercial uses, B1, B2, B3, and LOR. Storage uses, we are proposing to add commercial warehouse, for storage uses, commercial warehousing contained within fully enclosed buildings in the B3. Self-storage warehousing for rental or fully interior enclosed building space, permitted in the B3. Temporary storage of carnival rides, it's in the B2, applying it in the B3 as well. Theater, indoor first stage of movies in B1, B2, also B3. Town of Monroe, government, non-school administration facilities, permitted in the other commercial uses, also B3. Another town use in the B3 for the government facility, service facilities, including DPW garage, could potentially be in the B3. Veterinary hospital permitted in the other B1, B2 districts, also permitted in B3. And that'd be the summary of all the uses that could be permitted in the B3 district. Also, as part of the creation of these new potential uses, we created parking requirements for these. Commercial long-term parking, one space per employee plus five spaces. Indoor cultivation facility, one space per 1,000 square feet plus one space per employee, peak shift. And then power generation and commercial utility facility, subject to Commission determination based on facilities involved, plus one space per 1,000 square feet of facility office maintenance. We mimic these parking requirements based on other comparable uses already in the regulations and also industry standards for these types of uses. So now I want to talk about some potential areas where this could, this B3 district could potentially be applied. Primarily, you know, when we look at this, we looked at a couple of different areas, almost at the transition zones between surrounding the Stevenson Lumber property at the, adjacent to the Newtown, Monroe, Oxford Town Line, to the northern end of Route 25, where just south of the Newtown Town Line, there's some other uses over here which are kind of compatible and similar to what the uses we're proposing. And then potentially also along the south end of Route 25, maybe someone could possibly pursue this. Frankly, the former Walmart parcel could be something that could benefit from this type of flexibility, given the long time that property has been vacant and multiple developments have come through before this Commission, but unfortunately, nothing's actually moving forward. And then, so now I want to talk a little about Stevenson Lumber at 1585 Monroe Turnpike. So this could be a property's reference in our application that could be subject to this B3 district. I want to talk a little about the history for this property, give the Commission some better understanding of kind of some of the other uses that have been on this property for years, how those uses are essentially grandfathered in and could be applied to this property without, with minimal involvement from this Commission. And I think that our proposed B3 regulation would actually, if adopted and applied to this property, could give the Commission a little bit more control on how this property is developed into the future. So just to give some history, there are a lot of, the zoning file for this property is extensive. This property's received multiple approvals over multiple years. Here's an approved site plan from 1978, which shows and depicts over 10 acres of outdoor storage area on the property, which was approved. Here's another plan from 1983, which shows another very large outdoor storage area, which was approved for the property. And again, this is a, Stevenson Lumber historically was a very, very successful part of this town and vibrant, vibrant and successful piece of property and provided a lot of benefit to the community. So here's an aerial from 2006, which shows this facility operating in its prime. And as you can see, they have over 12 acres of outdoor storage, which was operating in accordance with its in accordance with its approvals for many years. And the Stevenson Lumber closed in, I think, two thousand and seven, and since that time, this property has laid dormant. This property has been, I think, evaluated by a number of different potential developers. I think this commission has probably heard people come in and say, hey, what can we do here? Can we do residential? Can we do things like that? But the property has constraints, the property has limitations based on where it's located from a market standpoint, it has limitations based on how it's been developed and how the property has been filled and worked over the years, it has limitations based on septic capacity. There are a number of constraints to the property which I think have contributed to its dormant nature. you know, there are some, there are also some benefits from the property, given its location. So driving down Route one eleven, you know this parcel exists, but it's actually very difficult to see what's on the property. You just hear some street views showing how the property is currently vegetated. There are a few gaps along the property's front edge which give you some glimpse into the, towards the rear of the property. You can see here, here's some of the old buildings. I think this, these pictures from street view were taken probably a couple of years ago. There's actually been some, some of the overgrowth has been cleared and there's actually been some, some care put to the property recently, trying to clean it up. But even with that, there's still problems with it in its abandoned state because it is constantly trespassed upon, it is vandalized. Here are some pictures of just some graffiti which has been applied to the property. We took the liberty of covering out some curse words, didn't think that would be appropriate for the commission to see, but it's, it's been neglected, it's been abandoned, it's been vandalized, broken glass, graffiti, as you can see, and it's been underutilized. And, you know, we feel that this property itself is really ripe for redevelopment and, which is why we propose this regulation amendment. Now, the uses that we propose, we think are appropriate for, for a B three district, specifically appropriate for this property. And now I want to go through staff's comments, which kind of talk about, obviously, Will did a very good job of establishing and putting out potential concerns with this regulation. And I wanted to kind of go through these point by point and provide some, provide a little bit of a narrative as to our thought processes, why this really is appropriate and why there really is a need for this in the community. So going through staff's comments dated May eighth, I'm just going to go run through the petition considerations that we'll offer. So number one, the petition narrative indicates that proposed B three district will provide a needed bridge between business and industrial districts by allowing a mix of complementary industrial and commercial uses and would provide an incentive for development of larger tracts of land. However, the petition does not present any evidence or data supporting that such a need actually exists, much less called for by the P O C D. No such recommendation is evident in the P O C D, future land use plan or recommendations, nor does the petition assess the compatibility of the mix of uses and industrial uses, much less three new added uses. So I wanted to talk about a little bit about the need. So we're proposing three new uses which could be applied to the B three district, and that was the long-term commercial parking lot, the, the indoor cultivation facility and the power generation and commercial utility facility. So just to talk about the commercial parking, one of the things that happens now in the town of Monroe is if you drive through the community, you can see a number of instances where people have commercial vehicles parked in areas where they shouldn't be parked. And just to give you some, you know, there's clearly some of these things, Route twenty-five, best-in-backyards, there's outdoor storage there, there's certainly a need for outdoor storage. Here are some other pictures of some other properties where people have boats parked in their driveways, people have tractor trailers parked in areas where they shouldn't be parked, people have other commercial-type vehicles parked in their areas, RVs, construction equipment, things like that here, Richard Drive, Wheeler Street. Down at Route thirty-four and Route one eleven, you know, as you're driving down Route one eleven, there's a vacant piece of property next to, I think it's Jensen's Automotive. That property has a big sign out front that says, "Store your equipment here, store your vehicles here, store your boats here." I don't believe that's a permitted use in the community, and I think what happens now is that, that's something that happens all over the place. I think these pictures actually demonstrate the need for that because there clearly is a need when there, when things are happening in violation of the current regulations, and there's no place for that to actually be applied and controlled by the, by the, by the commission or the community. Obviously, there's zoning enforcement if people are parking things where they're not supposed to be parked, but by creating an area where you can actually provide a commercial parking area for long-term duration, it'll, it lets you, it allows you to consolidate that in a specific area so that it can be controlled. And frankly, when you have somebody, if somebody has an RV or boats or things like that, they prefer not to park it in their driveway. They'd probably prefer to have a place where they can put it over the winter or put it when they're not, when it's not in use. And I think if you look, you know, if you go to Google and say, "Where can I park my RV?", there are very few places where you can actually find a place where that's permitted. So I think, you know, there certainly is a need because it exists in the community now, outside of any zoning approval. So I think that's, that's certainly something that's there. Will's next comment. "The narrative indicates that the proposed B three district is proposed to address the need for greater diversification of commercial uses, to foster the beneficial development of sufficiently sized properties, but provides no data or substantive analysis as to the alleged need or benefits of the proposed new district and mix of traditional retail uses with more intense industrial uses. Notwithstanding the inherent incompatibility of such a free-for-all mix of uses, the proposed three new uses are also questionable as to their commercial benefits to the community." So I just wanted to show some areas, actually, this goes back to my previous comment. So these are two other areas in Monroe that demonstrate the need. Cube Smart on Route twenty-five, this is a self-storage facility just south of the town line of Newtown. You can actually see, in addition to self-storage, they also have, I'm not sure in accordance with their zoning approval, but they have commercial vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats, et cetera, stored and parked outside. And these are something where, you know, they have self-storage, people can rent a self, a self-storage unit, but they also have the ability to rent an area for an outdoor vehicle to be stored. So this clearly demonstrates the need that this exists. Street, I believe this property is in, has a zoning citation on it, but there's clearly a need for places to put these type of vehicles, you know, and outdoor storage too. So I think this, again, demonstrates something where things are happening because there's no mechanism to do this in accordance with the regulations, so our proposed use creates that mechanism so it can be controlled by the commission. Now to the compatibility of uses discussion, we looked for other areas where there are similar uses to what we're proposing and that demonstrate their compatibility. Here's a, here's a stretch of road on Danbury Road in Wilton, Connecticut. You have Cube Smart and electric generation facility and some other outdoor storage areas. So this shows that it's across the street from some residential, so there's certainly compatibility of uses as it gets applied to other areas. Here is Orange, Connecticut, Boston Post Road, there's storage in the back, there's retail in front, there's restaurant uses, this is certainly compatible uses. This is Fairfield, Connecticut, you have Stop and Shop, you have a large self-storage area, some more public storage area with some other additional storage outside, and this is actually along, right along Kings Highway cutoff, you can see the highway to the rear, another rail spur or Metro North Railroad to the rear. So these are certainly instances where these uses can coexist and can be compatible with each other. Now that being said, we are proposing in the B three district a myriad of uses which could be applied to a property. That doesn't mean that an applicant would look to apply all of these properties next to each other at the same time. I think there is, there certainly, Will certainly makes a very good point that yes, if you try to put all these things hodgepodge next to each other, it may not be appropriate. However, you know, I don't think an applicant or someone who invests in a piece of property would look to propose and create something that isn't compatible because it's not only going to affect the property itself, but it's going to affect the ability for people to be interested in that property. If someone wants to do, you know, one of these uses, they may not necessarily want to be in one of the other, next to one of the other uses. So it would be, you know, I, I don't believe, I think it'd be disingenuous to assume that someone would try to make that application. And the beauty of that is, is that this commission gets to control that through a site development, a site development plan application or a special permit, a special exception permit application. So while these uses as a whole, if all thrown into one spot, there could be some incompat, incompatibility. But any proposal for any of these uses would have to come before the commission is part of that special exception permit process.
That's not accurate for your proposal. Fair amount of your site plan, not special exception.
Through the, through those two processes, yes. They would have to, whether it's a site plan application or a special exception permit application, this commission still gets to participate in that, in that process. There may not be a public hearing component of it, but there is something this commission gets to, to review and be a part of those decisions.
And there's less discretion with the site plan, than there is with the special exception.
That's true. We can certainly go back and look at the uses we were proposing from a site plan standpoint for a special exception to see if there are specific ones that could be revised and reviewed. And I want to say, as we go through Will's comments, our proposal is a starting point. From that, through discussions, you know, through the response from staff comments, through discussion with this commission, we're happy to and we're anxious to look to see how this proposal can be revised to reflect the concerns of the commission. That's the whole point why we're here. So I want to make sure that's clear. We're not, we're, you know, we are here to discuss this with you and make modifications as appropriate and provide responses and revisions to this based on the feedback we get here this evening. So number three, back to Will's comments. As commented above, the petition proposes to allow a mix of traditional commercial uses, retail stores, personal service businesses, shops, restaurants, et cetera, with more intense industrial uses, manufacturing, processing, assembly, commercial warehousing, firewood processing, et cetera. Such a mix, such a mix of uses are inherently incompatible. If a hybrid or transition zone is the desired result, then the type of uses permitted should be reflective and aligned with that purpose and focus by allowing only uses from the far end of the business district spectrum and the less intense uses of the industrial district, instead of the broader mixing of businesses and industrial uses as proposed. And again, we, as I just stated, we acknowledge that, that there may not be appropriate to put specific uses next to each other. However, when you look at Stevenson Lumber and you look at how this property has been used historically and traditionally, there can be manufacturing or industrial use, this was the former Truss Tech building. This building manufactured trusses and not only inside the building, but actually outside the building, stored those trusses throughout this area, throughout this area, and it existed on a different elevation than the balance of the site. This area is elevated when you look at the lower portion of the property here. There is certainly an opportunity on this specific property where you could propose some of these uses and it would not have an adverse impact on the balance of the property. You know, pulling into the property here, there are some, some buildings here which could be used for dance studios, you know, other type uses which could be complementary and operate on a, somewhat on an island when you look at the balance of the property. The property is large enough, which is why we have a ten-acre minimum requirement, so that you could actually look and plan and program a property so that the potential uses could be accommodated on the property without, without an adverse impact to each other or any of the surrounding areas. Number four, the petition does not include any correspondingly proposed mapped locations for the new B three district, except noting the potential for the former Stevenson Lumber B two district property. Without such, it is difficult to fully evaluate or determine the adequacy of the proposed underlying lot area and bulk standards or permitted principal and accessory uses of the new B three districts. We agree, and that's why what we're proposing is the, the creation of the district itself, and then the application of that district would have to come before this commission is part of a zone change application. So the, the question of where that could apply is dependent upon how this commission views individual applications for a zone change to the B three. And that would be done on a case-by-case basis. Number five, in addition to not including any specific mapped locations for the proposed B three district, the petition also fails to include specific land use criteria to be applied by the commission in establishing and evaluating the adequacy of any future proposed location for the new zoning district classification. For instance, consideration of the following should be incorporated through the establishment of specific locational criteria. Number one, connectivity and availability to transportation, utility and public infrastructure resources, physical characteristics to ensure B three district uses will not interfere with uses on abutting lands, desirability and physical attributes acceptable to accommodating intended B three district development, environmental soundness and compatibility of the proposed to be zoned, consideration of avoidance strategies regarding sensitive natural features, historic and cultural resources and residential neighboring uses, location parameters such that adequate provision is made for transition, minimizing and avoiding detriments to property values, loss of utility or amenity along the boundaries of the new zone where it borders upon more restricted zones. We did not propose any specific locational requirements for these districts because, again, we feel that this would be something that the commission should review on a case-by-case basis. And frankly, the other B one and B two districts do not provide, or any of the districts for that matter, do not provide the locational, locational criteria in the regulations on their own. It doesn't say the B one district should only be here, here and here and has to be reflective of all these things. You know, and I think that's something that's probably by design from a zoning regulation standpoint because it's, it's, it's on the commission to determine what properties are appro, what zone are appropriate for what property as part of any application or any other changes that the commission makes on their own.
The difference is you're proposing a floating zone, those zones all exist and they've been mapped, and they're related to the P O C D specifically, but they're all landed zones. That's why they don't have those kinds of criteria because they're not designed as a floating zone. A floating zone is what you have, which increases the district with the regulations and the permission of uses, and then someday it finds a home. And that's the big difference between the existing zone and what you're proposing.
And again, we're, we're, from a process standpoint, there has to be, the B three district has to exist in the regulations before it can be applied somewhere, which is why we, which is, which is why we chose the path that we took from a zoning standpoint, from a, from a procedural standpoint, that's made the most sense. We're not proposing a floating zone, typically floating zones, and as part of the floating zone definition, it creates parameters on how those could be applied. For, for example-
That's exactly what you do. There's no other thing to name this. You have zones that are mapped, floating zones or overlay zones. This is not an overlay zone, it's not a map zone, there's only one left.
Well, I think-
Give it any name you like, but that's what it is. You can give it any name you like, but that's what it is.
Well, again, this would, subsequent to this, a formal zone change application to establish a zone specific to a property that we're talking about would, would-
Absolutely. And that's what's required for floating, that's what's required for floating. The floating zone creates the, the uses and the bulk standards, but doesn't have a home. Generally, it has criteria for how to find a home for it because it doesn't necessarily want to be everywhere or anywhere at town. Because there's a difference between if you have a floating zone for business purposes versus residential, obviously, you know, those are really distant. So that's, that's really what this is.
Well, we're certainly happy to offer some additional language to satisfy staff and the commission if we need to provide some additional directional language to, to provide further clarification before it actually, it's a zone that actually exists. We're happy to, to work with staff and the commission to do that. Number six, the petition does not provide any corresponding real estate assessment or evaluation as to the veracity, desirability, demand or resulting economic benefits or incentives of the proposed new B three district or of the underlying proposed permitted uses, nor does the petition provide any analysis or study to support claims of resulting commercial benefits producing meaningful improved economic development opportunities over that presently available. As such, there is no correlating analysis supporting the petition's claims of consistency with the P O C D. Commercial development is substantially market-driven and zoning, when used as an economic driver, needs to respond to the prevailing market demands. If there is no underlying market demand, zoning will not create it. I want to touch on the last sentence first because that is a, that is an incredibly astute and correct statement. Zoning, if there's no underlying market demand, zoning will not create it. This piece of property in this part of town is zone B two, which is one of the most flexible commercial uses that this community has available at its disposal. This property has remained dormant since two thousand and seven. The only uses that this property has, has experienced over those years was a firewood processing operation, which was used in one of the buildings, which received a cease-and-desist disorder and was terminated and was going to be moved to the business park before it was sold, and for the storage of utility equipment by Eversource as part of a utility project. So the use itself and the existing zoning that exists for this property do not support nor create a market for any intended or desired use for the property. And I want to talk a little bit about the economic impact associated with that. Shoot, you know what, I skipped, I skipped a part. The, as part of the directional items that we talked about in terms of how to create something like this, I want to focus on a couple of things specific to this property before I get into the financial side. You know, Will's comments about the ability of transportation, utility and infrastructure resources, I want to highlight a few things for this property. Stevenson Lumber is- Lumber is accessed by two major highways, Route 25, or Route 111 and Route 34. It also benefits from a rail spur immediately adjacent to the property and includes a rail spur into the property. From a transportation standpoint, this property is uniquely positioned to actually access both state highway facility or state, you know, state road facilities and a rail spur. There are very few properties in Monroe which have active rail spurs and have the benefit of being immediately adjacent to a rail line. That is, that is supportive of an industrial use, which could benefit from that more than uses that are currently permitted in the B2 district, which is consistent with how it's been used for, for decades as a manufacturing facility. There used to be trains coming in and out of here with lumber for years, and frankly, if you continue to the west, that line is active and goes to Interstate Lumber in Newtown almost daily.
I thought that the section going to Stevenson though was due to infrastructure instabilities. It was not usable.
I believe that's traveling east, and even if that to be the case, those, there are certainly infrastructure improvements which could be applied to that rail line to make it active again. And I think that's the difference. They're not, they're not necessarily laying down new rail, but there's opportunities to propose any necessary improvements to actually make it active again. And regarding utility infrastructure, this property also benefits because it's immediately adjacent to high tension utility distribution lines, which originate at the Stevenson Dam and the hydroelectric plant that's there. And it's also located adjacent to the high pressure gas transmission line that runs through the, that runs through the property through this corner here and continues on across Ground View Drive and behind the Sisters of the Holy Family Nazareth property here. So not only is it uniquely positioned from a transportation infrastructure standpoint, it's also uniquely positioned from a utility infrastructure standpoint.
Can you get a service connection off the gas line?
For, for those types of lines, for certain types of facilities, you're not, you can't get a, you can't get a service connection for it, but you can get a potential utility connection for power generation or propane distrib, or gas distribution, things like that. You can't hook, you can't hook up a house to that, but you can hook up another facility. You can put a pressure reducing facility station on it and actually take resource off it that way. So now the, the economic component of our proposed regulation. I want to talk a little about the history for the property itself. So I have, this is the Monroe top taxpayer information from the grand list for the number of years preceding the closing of Stevenson Lumber. So in 2001, it was the eighth largest taxpayer on the grand list. 2002, it was eighth largest taxpayer on the grand list. This assessed value as shown here, you can see 3.1, and that's the, that's the assessed, not the appraised, 70% of the appraised value. So 2001, 2002, 2003, it dropped to 10. 2004 was still 10, but it was 3.6. 2005, it went up a couple of spots. It was 3.8 assessment, 3.8 million dollars assessment. And then the personal property tax, I wanted to point this out because the personal property tax, there are, um, the majority of the personal property tax and the highest tax paying properties in town contributing to the commercial tax base are utility uses. Canadian Light and Power, 12 million dollars. Aquarium Water Company, 6.7. Northeast Generation Company, Yankee Gas Services, some of the highest commercial, some of the highest contributors to the commercial tax base in the town of Monroe are from uses that we are proposing in the B3 district. I believe seven out of the 10 are from these uses that we're proposing. Not only from real estate standpoint, from also personal property standpoint. And the other component to that is, so, so as you can see, from 2006, it was, it was assessed at 3.8. Its current tax card has an assessed value of 1.9. So the property value has deprecied, depreciated considerably since it's been vacated. And the fact that there's no activity on the site, it is a, it is a detriment to our community. It is a detriment to our commercial tax base. I think from an economic development standpoint, it should be the collective goal to get this property re-engaged and activated as quickly as possible. And that's why this was a priority growth district and specifically called out as one of the five goals from the P O C D from 2004.
It's not in the priority growth district.
It is.
It's not in the bubble for priority growth.
It is listed, it is listed. It is listed. It's, well, it's listed in the text of the P O C D.
Stevenson neighborhood for some reason is what's in the priority.
I mean, it's, it seems pretty clear it's referring to this property. It actually, it's listed on a map and it's circled incorrectly. You know, and the other thing I wanted to point out too was, from a neighborhood standpoint, there was concern about potential impact to property values from home standpoint. So I wanted to look at two different areas. So Stevenson Lumber is located here. Whispering Pine is a neighborhood which was built, both built in similar time with a series of Colonials and different types of houses that are very similar to another neighborhood which was constructed in a similar time of Manor Drive. This is actually my neighborhood. I live right in this area. But we wanted to look at property assessments for the Stevenson Lumber, both while it was active and today, and then also results of sale prices for these homes, both before while Stevenson Lumber was active and since it's closed. When you look at these two neighborhoods, when you look at the neighborhood immediately adjacent to Stevenson Lumber, it has an appraisal value of about $174 a square foot. And this is based on all these homes, Colonials, Capes, contemporaries, which are immediately adjacent to Stevenson Lumber. When you go back up and look at Manor Drive, which is up here, further away, much further away, not immediately adjacent to, to the Stevenson Lumber property, it actually has an appraisal value of $173, $173 per square foot. So when you look at these two neighborhoods, the concern about, well, if you implement these uses, it could potentially degrade property values. I think this goes to show that the properties immediately adjacent to the facility are actually appraising at higher dollars per square foot than a neighborhood which has much further separation. And they're very similar in, in home size and style and even construction here. And then on a, we also want to look not only at praise value, but also sales value. So we looked at a number of houses in these two neighborhoods, when they sold. They actually some sold while it was operating, some sold after it was closed. You can see the neighborhood immediately adjacent to sold for about 159 a square foot, while the neighborhood further away sold for 154. So these are two neighborhoods which are in close proximity to, one immediately adjacent, one further away, and the, both assessed values and sale price data is actually, you know, demonstrates that we believe that it doesn't pose a potential for, potential decrease in property values. At least how the property was used historically. You know, and I want to go back to, okay, good, we're right here. One of the other components regarding the assessed, or the, the property values of them themselves, when you look at the personal property tax, if you look at, this is from, this is actually from 2019. No, it's not. This is, this is from 2018, excuse me. So you look at these real estate values and the personal property values. Obviously, Stevenson Lumber is no longer on this property because of the assessed values dropped as much as it has. When you look at the real estate and the personal property, again, you look at why these properties contribute so much to the tax base. Connect Light and Power, $22 million in personal property. Aquarium Water Company, $11 million in personal property. NBC Universal. NBC Universal took over a building on, off of Pepper, off of Route 25, north end of town. That property wanted to be utilized. They wanted to provide outdoor storage by the, by putting shipping containers in front of their building. That application came before this commission. It was contentious at times. It required multiple public hearings. It was ultimately approved, which is great because now NBC Universal is one of the highest property tax contributors in the community. There's clearly a need for this, or they wouldn't have asked for it and we wouldn't be asking for it. And I think what's, what's missed sometimes is just because if someone proposes outdoor storage, it doesn't mean it doesn't have a correlation to property tax revenue to the community. And to point that out, I want to say that M Cube Technologies, a piece of property which I showed earlier, I don't think I showed it earlier. It's a, it's a self-storage facility, and that property pays 6.8 million dollars, the third highest taxpayer in the community for personal property. Because for commercial properties, when these are assessed, they're assessed based on income and the income producing of the commercial property itself. So when you look at self-storage, the only two personal property, the only two real estate values paying more than that would be Clock Tower Square and then Village Square, some of the other grocery stores. Big Y Foods, you can see is up there, and then I think Stop &amp; Shop too as well. But what happens is, you look at the, the rent revenue that comes through from a rental income standpoint and the overall income producing of the property. If you, self-storage facilities have the highest rent per square foot out of anything, because you're renting, you're renting an area, you're paying monthly to have that area, and that creates an incredibly high rental income for the property itself. So outdoor storage, while NBC Universal is using outdoor storage, their property generate, or their property tax generation is coming from the fact that they're, that they have really expensive personal property, but also there's revenue associated with that property. So let's say for Stevenson Lumber, for example, if we're proposing commercial outdoor parking, that's going to generate revenue for the property owner. Let's say, let's say that generates $300,000 a year in revenue. That's $3 million from an assessment standpoint that gets contributed to the tax rolls. That wouldn't, that would not happen if it wasn't able to be used for that purpose. So I want to make, I want to, so the need for storage, it can create revenue from a property standpoint, which increases the valuation of that property and contributes to the tax base.
Yeah, but you could also build a warehouse and just store it right now.
Yes, you could, but people aren't, because the costs associated with that, that the pro forma doesn't, doesn't work out. Yes, someone could build a-
That is not exactly what NBC's doing. NBC's got a large building and they have outdoor storage within the confines of a 20% limit. And they have very expensive equipment, which adds to it exponentially, which is not the normal outdoor storage, not the normal storage use.
Okay.
They're kind of a skewed value.
But-
Same as utilities are skewed value.
Sure. But using commercial outdoor, using, using an area for like, say, a commercial outdoor parking lot, that could theoretically generate $300,000 a year of income, which could result in $3 million to the tax base or from an assessed value, you could not create a pro forma to build a facility and actually have that work from an economic standpoint.
Well, again, the examples you're showing are all things with buildings. You're talking about cube storage. It's built, it's all indoor.
Well, there's still, there's still property tax revenue that could be generated by using outdoor storage for, as a revenue producing opportunity. That's the point.
I get the point. Your examples though are of buildings that need-
Consider them two points. At one point about buildings and high property values and personal property tax, and the fact that personal property tax for NBC Universal comes from stuff that's being stored outside. And there's another point that using outdoor storage as a way to generate revenue adds to the commercial tax base.
And, you know, the fact that the property has been vacant and not reutilized isn't necessarily because of the fact, well, Stevenson Lumber went out for various reasons. Okay? It's more market driven and the other changing types of uses that have taken over their market. The fact it hasn't been replaced doesn't mean that there isn't viability for the zoning, because I'll take you to another part of town where we have it's owned for industrial with the addition of retail of a certain size, and we now approved two different projects, one a large retail project and one a large industrial project, both been approved under those zonings and neither is being built.
That's true. The first instance was because a global economic change of Whole Food, of Amazon buying Whole Foods changed the entire retail approach of a potential tenant. And the second had to do with cost implications and restrictions opposed from a zoning standpoint, which made that project not viable, and they were able to pursue opportunities in other communities that didn't have those same restrictions. So, so there are market and zoning factors that contribute to that.
Right. There's individual reasons why it didn't work. I get it. But my point was that it isn't just because it's zone B2, it doesn't work.
No, not at all. You're absolutely right. But by, but my, by maintaining the status quo, the likelihood of investment to create that property to be a contributing taxpayer and a viable and vibrant contributor to the community will remain the same. So continuing on, number seven, the three new commercial uses are each proposed to be permitted in the new B3 district, subject to a commission special exception permit. However, no corresponding use-specific supplemental standards are proposed. This would be added to zoning 8.2.3. Use-specific supplemental standards are an integral zoning component of a special exception permit used to ensure their compatibility with the location and other B3 district permitted uses that do not require a special exception permit, thus avoiding conflicts within the district and on surrounding lands outside the district. 8.3, it has a list of additional requirements for special exception uses. We didn't propose any specific ones for the uses that we have. We're happy to review them, review staff comments and the commission's comments to understand what, if any, you feel are appropriate for these uses. So commercial long-term parking. It is unclear how a parking lot would provide incentive for increased economic development or would help attract additional economic development investment to an area or property. In several ways, it has the potential to do the opposite. Zoning enforcement to confirm lease term agreements for parking duration is difficult at best. This is not a recommended means of land use regulation and presents other legal challenges associated with interpretation and disclosure of private lease agreements. Minimum of 30 days does not seem to be relatively long-term. The types of parked vehicles is open to any sort but lacks definition. Would this include new vehicles, used vehicles, damaged vehicles, junked vehicles, which would contradict prohibition of junkyards? In addition to vehicles of any sort, this would permit parking in, of parts thereof, also not defined. Would this include allowance for parking of new parts, used parts, damaged parts, parts with chemical liquids or other potentially pollutant or hazardous contents, or other environmental issues associated herewith? Recent revision to the zoning regulations, which amended many of the parking standards for different uses, strayed from parking ratios based on number of persons or employees, recognizing such is near impossible to police and accurately determined during operations of the facility. And the I-2 district already permits a commercial vehicle facility defined as, "An establishment where commercial licensed vehicles typically consisting of fleet vehicles designed to carry freight, passengers for a fee, or merchandise, or which are incidental to a tradesman business, are collectively housed and stored inside and/or outside when they are not in service off premises, including administrative, security, dispatch, and minor maintenance facilities thereto, within a fully enclosed building, existing zoning regulations." So again, we're looking to take a piece of property that is underutilized, that has large swaths of pavement, which are currently sitting there vacant. What we're proposing is to create a mechanism where this could be used for parking of vehicles which are now being parked in various parts of the community without a permit illegally, for storage of these types, this types of, these types of facilities. So this is just to show how potentially this type of lot could be applied to this property, to a portion of the property, where someone who has an RV or a boat or something that needs to be stored could be parked. And we propose the, the, some of the, the items that we add to the definition in terms of having a lease term, we're trying to let the commission be aware that we're not looking for something that can just come willy-nilly. We think that for someone to make a commitment to rent a spot for at least a month, at least provides the commission some comfort that this isn't something that's going to just be a junkyard. No one would want to, I don't think anyone would pay to rent a space to put a junked car, nor would, nor would the property owner want to take that for no reason. So the concept here is to create an opportunity for RVs, boats, things like that, things that are parked on the corner of 34 and 111 can go into an area where it's, the infrastructure currently exists. It could be better controlled, and it could be potentially a revenue generator, which will increase the, the commercial assessed value of the property. Now, with this, you could add some extensive landscaping, and we're certainly happy to discuss with the commission of other concerns about how to properly screen, to ensure that this wouldn't create any kind of impact to, to the community or residents or people driving up and down Route 111. But this is an area that's currently paved that could, there, we've demonstrated the need for this type of use, and it could be applied to this property without much impact or without the need for much, you know, disturbance or anything like that. So, and we're happy to look at and discuss with the commission if there are additional specific standards that we'd want to apply to that. Next use, indoor cultivation facility. It is unclear how this new use is to be viewed in the context of permitted agricultural use. As proposed to be defined, this use may contradict with the prohibition of marijuana growing manufacturing facilities. Ventilation and noise, odors, water use, drainage and recapture, as well as the use, storage, and disposal of chemicals typically associated with growing of plants, among other related use and operational factors, should be addressed through the inclusion of use-specific special exception permit supplemental standards- should be addressed through the inclusion of use-specific special exception permit supplemental standards. As above, an alternative parking ratio must, uh, more easily verifiable should be proposed, which does not relate to number of employees. We're happy to look at some of these other requirements that we're looking to incorporate into supplemental standards. But I want to, I want to make a couple of points. You know, other agr- art agricultural uses right now are permitted in the residential districts only. Aquaponics, hydroponics farming is being applied to a number of things that aren't marijuana. And if the zoning regulations have a prohibition of marijuana, that exists, allowing, um, allowing this agricultural use in commercial districts, which we feel is appropriate, given the, the propensity for these uses to come on a much more active, th- these are being, these are being embraced by a number of communities that are looking at these as a way to grow lettuce, um, thyme, things like that. And actually, I have a, for the commission's own enjoyment. I have a, a, a scientific study about aquaponic production of tilapia and basil, comparing a batch and stagger cropping system. And I also want to point out- That- The Town of Monroe Land Use Department has a beautiful aquaponics, um, fishbowl on the land, on the staff counter. When I noticed it today, when I was in there, there's a plant growing out of it, there's a fish floating around. That's aquaponics. That's exactly what this is. So, the, the concept of creating a mechanism for this to be applied in an existing building, where this has become as prevalent as it has, we think is an appropriate use. Now, you know, agricultural uses today are just allowed in the residential. We think this could be something that could be applied to, um, commercial uses potentially. And that's why we propose it in the B three districts.
I mean, it sounds a little bit from what you just said, that you felt the comment was saying that this isn't a viable use. It's not what the comments are talking about. It's talking about the definition and the standard that would go with the operations of these, is not the question, stat.
And we're, and we're happy to work with stat to create some additional, uh, mechanisms to further define that. And then lastly, um, power generation and commercial utility facility. Such uses tend to be exempt from local zoning. We're subject to the Connecticut Siting Council, limiting the town's land use control and review of such uses. Such uses tend to generate divergent impact conditions, noise, odor, vibration, visual lighting, hours of operations, et cetera, which should be addressed through the inclusion of use-specific special exception permit supplemental standards, designed to minimize their effects on other permitted district uses and neighboring land uses, particularly on area residential uses. And the parking ratio associated with the office component could be understated where a larger office and/or maintenance component is involved. Just to focus again on the utility infrastructure that surrounds Stevenson Lumber and the unique opportunity this property presents for those types of uses. We think it's something that the commission would hopefully embrace and encourage, um, or at least allow for it to be a possibility. And, and while the Siting Council does participate in some of those, we also want to make it very clear that this commission should also have some sort of, um, review process with that, which is why I propose it as a special exception use.
You say participate, it's subject to the Siting Council, we're, we have no say.
Well, either way-
We have a town public process, we don't have a zoning process.
Well, we're, we're proposing this to be a special exception use.
Whether you make it or not, if the state statute says it goes to the Siting Council, we don't have a choice.
Just to clarify, if I may, Robin Pearson, for the record. It is true that many of those utility infrastructure, operational, um, or production facilities are regulated by the Siting Council. Siting Council, as I believe you just noted, does give deference to and look at the local regulation. It's part of the consideration of the process that you go through. There's also, for an applicant, if an applicant were to come through the special pro- permit process here, they would have to adhere to any of the regulations that you lay out within the, uh, within the, uh, new B three zone itself. So, it's an opportunity to have more input at the beginning than at the end of the process. You may have been following what's been going on. They went in, uh, uh, an applicant went in for a very large solar farm on an area that was zoned for farming, previously used for farming, uh, got Siting Council approval, and it was tied up in significant litigation afterwards because the town had things it wanted to see happen. And ultimately, a settlement was reached. This was in the last six months. And there were a lot of conditions that were put on the ability to use it, um, that were respectful of the things that the town wanted to see in the first place. So, even though there is a Siting Council process, and ultimately it does have final say, and it can override local zoning, it is a process that is considerate of whatever local, local zoning is interested in seeing in place.
I don't want to be argumentative. It, it may look at the zoning regulations, which it does, and there is a public process that occurs with applications that go to Siting Council. There is no zoning permit application, there is no zoning commission review in a formal sense of an application and an approval by the zoning commission.
I don't disagree to the extent that ultimately it's up to the Siting Council. Yes.
So, uh, going on to the rest of Will's comments. Number eight. The new B three district proposes to ex- exempt or accept, eliminate itself from the longstanding uniform twenty percent outdoor storage standard, meaning outdoor storage would be permitted to cover most of a lot for any permitted use in the new B three district. This is significant and dramatic change. The petition does not provide any corresponding assessment of the potential impacts or changes resulting from such a change. Development on a new B three district property with a minimum ten-acre lot area, excluding the most restrictive protective setbacks, assuming adjacency to residential property, would allow a s- a small building as fourteen hundred square feet, the same as a typical residential backyard shed, and over seven acres of outdoor storage. Larger-sized parcels, parcels would allow incremental greater acreage of outdoor storage, i.e., the former Stevenson Lumber property redeveloped could yield nearly thirty-four acres of outdoor storage. So, I just want to bring the commission's attention back to the, the most recent aerial of this facility in operation, where it had over twelve point four acres of land used and utilized for outdoor storage. Now, this is a use that's been grandfathered into the property. And the zoning file is, is extensive. This is a manufacturing use in a B two district. It's a manufacturing use in a B two district that allowed warehousing and storage of materials outside. And an applicant could go into the zoning enforcement officer and request a certificate of zoning compliance for a similar use with a similar outdoor storage arrangement as what's been previously approved and utilized on this property. What we're proposing is the establishment of a B three district, which would give this commission additional control over how that could get applied. Now, we recognize and understand that the proposing, that a proposal to just simply, um, eliminate any outdoor storage, um, framework or parameters would likely be subject to, uh, discussion and consideration from this commission. So, we're certainly happy to, you know, review this with you and understand your primary concerns and consideration. But I do want to point out, an applicant could come to the zoning enforcement officer and request a certificate of zoning compliance to use this property for manufacturing or industrial use, based on the grandfathered use of the property. And even if the Z E O denied that, that would go to the zoning board of appeals and would likely be upheld through a legal challenge.
Kevin, first of all, which is fine, the basis of, I know, I understand what you're saying. But we don't know, based on this aerial, whether that's within compliance with the approval. But more to the point. How does changing it to a B three zone change the non-conforming status or the grandfathered status of a property? They still could do that even with a B three, even if we changed it to I three, they could do the same thing.
What, what we're proposing, you're, you're absolutely right. They could. We're proposing to work, you know, again, we came to the commission in December to talk about how this property could be utilized. We went to the subcommittee a few times. We're trying to create a mechanism that gives the commission control of how this property is developed. And while we propose a number of different uses which are not in the code, right? We couldn't apply for one of those uses, but we could apply for a manufacturing or warehousing use. But what we wanted to do is create a mechanism for this to go through the normal zoning process, with the normal participation and consideration and, um, forethought that this commission puts into all applications. So, that's why, that, that's why we're here.
You're not giving them anything they don't already have. You just, I mean, the introduction of different uses opens the door for something else to happen on the property. And if it's a different use, that opens a permit door that gives a little bit more oversight than something that may be more of the same, of existing. But you're not giving them any controls they don't already have.
But, but by putting in those uses, right, for manufacturing or warehousing or et cetera use, we would then come before this commission to apply those uses.
That's what I'm saying. If you do something new, obviously that opens a little bit more door. But you're not giving them a control they don't already have from a point of view. Someone wants to do something different that's permitted in the current B two, that's going to hap- that would happen to-
But if someone wanted to do something which, which was, which is grandfathered on this property, they do not have to come to this commission to do it.
Right. And if, and if they change it to B three or I three or whatever, they also don't have to come if they want to do that. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying. You're not changing that, actually. That isn't making that, the only thing that you're doing, which is not a bad thing, is potentially having other uses that might make it more viable for someone to do something with this.
Well, but, but we're also here because those other uses were incorporated into the B three.
Yeah.
So, it could be managed and regulated through that process instead of just going in with a certificate of zoning compliance.
But just to follow up on your comments, which are valid, there are two components to this. One is that you're opening the door for some additional uses on this site, which I hope we're going to be able to make the case to you and the commission are beneficial for the community. But you're also, if you were to adopt this, you're putting into place the ability to regulate uses that are prior existing legally non-conforming and allowed on the site. But you'd be able to do it through the process of a special permit. And it is a benefit for a community to be able to have a regulation that, um, and maybe there's some additional language we can put in to make that quite clear, that addresses, um, the regulation of a prior existing use. A lot of towns do that. You see it quite often with, uh, coring, special permits.
You can't make a non-conforming use require a special permit with a change in the zoning, that's-
You can make a non-conforming use adhere to certain requirements of a special permit to regulate it, to make it, um, hospitable and compatible with the area, as long as those issues are directed to public safety, welfare, things like that, that don't put it out of business, but might make it better screened, um, control noises, direct hours of operation potentially, um, traffic generation, all those things are due.
Yeah, well, recent state statutes would, would contradict that.
Pardon me?
Recent changes to the statutes would contradict that based on, um, some cases that said you cannot require a non-conforming use to now get this, except for permit after the fact.
No, I believe that goes the other way, but let's, you and I talk about that and explore it in a little more detail, but I think it actually goes the other way.
I mean, if it's not the coring-
You can regulate it. You can't regulate it out of business.
So, moving on to Will's comments nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Number nine, the proposed B three bulk setback standards mirror the B one and B two districts, which standards in several instances are less than that required in the industrial districts for the industrial uses proposed to be included in the B three district, particularly where abutting a residential. Number ten, the allowance of gas station canopies within the setback area is contradictory to other permitted parameters for the new B three districts, uh, as well as the landscape buffer standards. Similarly, to when the commission added such use in the L O R district, the proposed exception should also not be included. We're happy to remove that, uh, component of the, of the proposed regulation. We simply mirrored the B two, but we're not interested in, in providing gas station with canopies and setback areas and things like that on this, on, at least in this one instance. Probably this could be applied. Number eleven, the number of wording, standard inconsistencies between the proposed text and tables, well, we'd certainly be, like to work with you to get more and clean those up as part of, um, a response to the discussion at tonight's meeting. And number twelve, in summary, the commission is in the beginning stages of updating the two thousand and ten P O C D, which will involve a comprehensive evaluation of the town's vision for future land use over the next ten years, including a focused assessment of the existing zoning districts, major travel corridors, and presently vacated properties, such as the former Stevenson Lumber property. As such, the creation of any new zoning districts and the addition of new permitted land uses might be premature at this time and lacking the benefit of the community data and information, which will be generated and studied during the upcoming P O C D update. Obviously, this commission knows very well that the P O C D is a guidance document, is independent from zoning regulations and how the town is actually, um, regulated from a zoning standpoint. It certainly provides frameworks and provisions on, on certain primary goals. And I'll point to the two thousand and ten P O C D, where Stevenson Lumber was identified in a number of different areas. It was identified as a priority growth district. While it may not have been on the map, it was certainly listed in the text as Stevenson Lumber. There were many focuses on how, uh, in the two thousand and ten P O C D in, in chapter seven, about how to improve the zoning process, how to look at, create new regulations. And there were primary goals in there, where those targets were supposed to be met in two years and four years, et cetera. And then, as, there were five priority actions identified in that P O C D. And number four was related to the Stevenson Lumber property in this area of town. While the guidance document is a great tool, it is independent from, from regulations. And we don't think that, it's certainly up to this commission, but we, we feel strongly, and that's why we made the application, that there's an opportunity to take a property that's underutilized and to allow for it to be utilized and to put it back as a much larger, greater tax contributor to the commercial tax base in this community. So, what we've proposed, um, with the creation of a B three district, which could be applied through a zone change application for the Stevenson Lumber property. We've tried to do so with a framework that creates some additional uses, which would be appropriate for this, for this area, for, for a potential B three use. And we're happy to, to, to get into a discussion with the commission about our specific uses, our specific language, and what the commission would like to see to, to, to view this application favorably. So, with that, I think that kind of summarizes our presentation, and we'd be happy to, um, answer any questions the commission may have.
Okay. All right. Can we go to the definitions of the three new, uh-
Sure. This was a long presentation, longer than most.
Uh, so with the commercial long-term parking, uh, you know, we discussed, talked about a bunch of different vehicles. Any thoughts of, you know, narrowing it a little bit, whether it just be, you know, specifically boats, or specifically RVs, or something along those lines, and not having such a wide, uh, kind of spectrum?
A- a- absolutely. We'd certainly be, you know, one of the things that we'd want to put in here is they'd have to be registered vehicles. We'd be at, willing to add that. We're happy to remove the construction equipment from there and the parts thereof. That was a comment that Will had made, that we're happy to remove that. You know, the concept of a formal lease agreement with a minimum timeframe of thirty days. We were trying to create, um, create a requirements that this wouldn't be used in such, in, in less of a formal process. But we're happy to hear what the commission's thoughts are on how to, how to better word this and frame this in a way that would, would make you feel comfortable. So, yeah, so we're certainly willing to, um, you know, remove some of those other items and try to narrow the scope.
And then the other thing, uh, with regards to that, you had the parking plan, I believe it was one spot for an employee plus five other spots. Is that not, it's obviously not including the spots that are going to be, being leased out, correct?
That'd be correct. So, that'd be for, so parking requirements would be off-street parking requirements for vehicles. And our thought was, if there's, you know, if there's one employee in a, you know, in a shack or something, you know, kind of taking tickets and stuff like that and monitoring and providing security, making sure that everything's safe and protected, um, there'd likely be, if somebody brings a boat or brings an RV, they're going to need to get a ride home. So, we'd want enough parking spaces for, for, for people who'd be providing transportation to people who are dropping things off and stuff like that, so. But yeah, we can certainly look at that parking requirement and maybe work with stat to try to come up with something that would be more appropriate.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know, just from experience with a storage unit, I frequent, that a lot of times you'll have the parked, uh, vehicles and stuff, and people will show up there, and maybe they're not taking the RV somewhere, but maybe they're working on it or doing, you know, spending some time in it. So, it's kind of, you get a little more parking, uh, that if not, they end up parking in front of the thing. It can become kind of a nightmare, uh, to navigate these when stuff like that happens.
Okay.
I think that's it for now.
Ken?
I'm good. It's interesting that, that you bring up the, uh, the RVs and stuff, because the more and more you do look around town, that is, that they're there, you know? That's, that's just a really, I, I think, plus where it's located, right? With Stevenson, it's at the forty, one-eleven. There's, there's, there's probably a lot of, uh, traffic and somebody that does have an RV, not to keep it on their property, probably- property, probably would be a good idea to have something like that. My question, though, is when, in your thoughts here, you're gonna try to do something up top on the property and as well down below on the property, or is this just something that you're, no, I'm not talking about the parking stuff. I'm just talking about the full development of the property. Are you, are you thinking about doing something on the bottom as well?
So certainly, so the, if the commission sees this...
Again, I just want to interject here. We're talking about a zoning regulation, a zoning definition. We're not talking about a specific piece of property.
If the commission were to consider creating this B three district, and a lot of our discussion has been to a specific area, because a zone change application for this, for a specific property would follow subsequent to an approval for this. Yes, there would be, you know, the idea is to take a underutilized vacant abandoned property, create some opportunity to get that reinvested. There's infrastructure on this property. There's buildings that are vacant, that could be moved into, and they could be occupied, which would create an opportunity to generate some revenue to make this more than it is today, and even approve upon what was there previously. But the property has to become an asset again in order for that to take place. So yes, there'd be, again, from a B three district standpoint, there could be a potential solar farm towards the rear of the property. There could be potential manufacturing use in the Trustech manufacturing building. There could be a dance studio.
And you don't think you'd get this under a B two or something along those lines?
Well, a lot of those other uses aren't permitted in the B two district, which is why we're here in the first place. There's no, you know, the manufact, the grandfathered uses, which someone could come in and try to get now, we wanted to create a situation, and again, to Will's point and to Robin's comments before, the possibility to go in and do that exists. But we don't want to, we, we and the applicant and the interested party want to come in and work collaboratively with the commission. We want, we want you to be a part of this process, because your opinions and your insight and your experience are valuable to the orderly development of this community. And by looking at these uses and by looking at how this could be narrowly applied, you know, is important. And we are looking for that. We're not, you know, sure, some of these uses could be in the B two. Theoretically, they could go get the grandfathered uses in before and then make an application for the B two, and there could be, you know, that could happen. But we don't want that to happen. We want to be able to create a mechanism for this commission to be a part of...
You want your own...
Right.
Excellent.
I'm all set.
Okay. I love, love, thank you. You're trying to create a new district to accommodate for a piece of property that exists right now. Here's what you're basically, close to Stevenson property. So, when Mr. Kimball bought the property, he realized that he brought...
Hasn't bought the property. And Kimball Family Investments has an option to purchase the property with a zoning contingency.
But realizing that he purchased his property as a B two.
With a zoning contingency. And frankly...
Well, I'm saying, yeah, but I'm saying, basically, it's a B two.
It is a B two today, correct? Yes.
Now, you want to create a B three district for us to accommodate, which we don't have any district B three. Like, we have industrial zone, we have a B one, we have a B two, but we don't have a B three.
That's correct.
Right. So that this B three could apply to any piece of property that has 10 acres or more.
If the commission were to receive a zone change application and view it favorably, the commission could change.
Basically, it's not for one particular piece of property. It could be for other pieces of property within the town.
Similar to how the...
We don't have, we don't have a specific area that we have zoned for that. We don't have a specific B three.
That's correct.
So you're trying to create a B three that we don't even have a zone B three in town.
That's correct. Our proposed regulation amendment is to create a B three district.
Right. So, the way I look at it is that if we don't have a piece that's cut out for B three, that we can have B threes all over town.
B threes could only be applied anywhere in town if this, if this commission adopted this regulation and then, and then received applications for a zone change and approved those applications for something.
Right. But if not all the standards, we'd have to approve it.
No, zone changes, the commissions have incredible oversight and review over zone changes. There, and there is, there is countless case law to support that a zoning commission can deny a zone change application with, with little, you know, what, you know, establish their reasons, but you have incredible discretion on what can be approved. And if you deny a zone change application, it's very unlikely that it would be overturned in an approval if you, in an appeal, if you were to write your approval denial in a certain fashion.
Well, so it goes for amending also, those...
Absolutely. Yes.
And, and I just want, I get nervous when he's sounding so good as an attorney. No, he's, he's right. You have total discretion as to whether or not you want to adopt this B three zone, as it might be worked out and made palatable to you. That is a policy decision that you make. In terms of the law, it's referred to as a legislative decision. And I tell all my clients, there's no sense challenging or trying to overturn a legislative decision that's gone against you. It's just not worth it. It's very different from a special permit, which is an administrative review that you're doing, or a site plan application, which is an administrative review or a subdivision. Those are all different. But with adopting the text, you have total discretion. You want to do it, you can do it, and nobody's going to reverse your decision, unless you procedurally did something wrong, like the notice was wrong or something like that. As to landing it, so once you adopt the text, you may never have a B three zone in town, because you may never find a site that you feel is worthy of having that B three zone land. And that landing of that zone is, again, a legislative, policy, totally discretionary decision of yours. And if you don't want to approve a site to be B three, no one's going to prevail in court against you with regard to that. So, that's, that's an important distinction, and I'm glad you asked the question. And I think it's important that that's underscored for the commission.
Okay. The other question I have is, we have certain, certain zones set up for certain things. We have an industrial zone, which a lot of these are industrial uses that you want to use under, well, you keep referring to the Stevens property, so that's why I'm referring to the Stevens property. That's, not that it makes any difference, but with this regulation, you're trying to put, you're trying to mix retail with industrial. We have zones set up for that. And then there's other zones that can accommodate some of these things, like industrial zone can accommodate a lot of these things. So, I don't understand why you think there is a need for a B three. You see, you, this is, this you're creating, you're creating this zone. And you're saying, and you keep referring back to Stevenson, which I don't think you should be referring back to Stevenson. It should be referred just to this in the text in itself, because you keep on going back to Stevenson. But like the attorney just said, this, we may not approve this for Stevenson. So, I want to know why you think that this need for a B three district is good for this town.
For this, I'm going to defer to one of the principals of the applicant, the Kimball Family Investments.
Hi, members of the commission. It's John Kimball, fourteen twenty-eight Monroe Turnpike. So one of the most vibrant businesses in our community was Steven, the Stevenson Lumber Company. Employed a great number of the citizens in our community. It, the town flourished with this business. What happened in this business is it had a marriage of uses from the business two zone and the industrial zone. How that happened over time, how that came to be, I wasn't around. I didn't do it. I didn't zone it, but it was done. The mill building, they manufactured windows, doors, trim, millwork. They sold retail goods. They manufactured trusses and delivered them all over. So, the site itself and the economic vitality that it brought to the community and the vibrancy that this site brought to the community was the thing that called us to basically create a zone to bring that vibrancy back to the community. Now, there are other ways to take a use that's not in the zone and bring it in, like repair garage from business two to industrial two. We could have added those uses to the business two zone, but we did not feel as a group that the commission wanted to see industrial uses in all of the business two zones in town. So we felt that it was much more appropriate to put it out there as a segregated zone, and then, once we crossed this hurdle, the commission would then have another chance to look at how that specific zone that we, that we tried to create as a group, working together, how we could apply that zone to this property to make something successful. The things and attributes of this property, topographic differences, connectivity to infrastructure is significant. Some of the things that, getting the zone, the give and take, you know, the building that's down on the bottom corner, that'd be a great manufacturing building, and I potentially, we have a tenant for that for manufacturing. That's not a grandfathered manufacturing building. The manufactured building that is grandfathered is sitting by the railroad tracks. But that's nestled with four other buildings that would really make a potential sportsplex with indoor soccer, gymnastics, dance, other things. And we didn't feel that having a manufacturing use in that building was the best use. Now, that goes to Will's compatibility. We're going to have uses on this thing that are not compatible. But as developers and people that live in town and people that are trying to bring the vibrancy back to this site, it's our job to work with the tenants. The other thing on the commercial store, outside parking, if you look at the eighty thousand square feet of buildings in the front, if they're enthusiastically successful, we'll get rid of the tenants that we have in our commercial outdoor parking, because we'll need that space for the parking for our retail uses. The retail uses, if they take off, that's the beauty of commercial outside storage. It's not permanent. We're not building a hundred buildings there and investing in warehouses and structures. There's already a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of buildings on the site. So, to, to, to kind of put a point on it, no, there's not a B three zone in town. And I don't think a B three zone is appropriate in many places. Location alone, B three was literally utilized here and created one of the most vibrant economic drivers in our community. And that's what we want to try and recreate.
Thanks, John. And Commissioner Ambrosi, to your, to your point, yeah, there are other ways we could have done this. We could have proposed to add use, we could have proposed to change this to I three. We could have proposed to create a economic overlay zone. There were a number of zoning mechanisms that we could have reviewed and considered. And I think we talked about a number of those potentially at the various informal discussions and subcommittee meetings that we had. When, when, when push came to shove, and to Mr. Kimball's point, this kind of operated as a, it operated as a property in a zone that wasn't defined. So what we tried to do is define that zone. And we came up with B three. Maybe we could have called it Stevenson one.
Well, I'm just saying, because I mean, basically, I mean, in P O C D, it called for it to be retail.
And, and...
It definitely did. And, you know, we're going through a new P O C D now. And like you said, that maybe the old one wasn't followed, but this is a new commission, and we're in the process of doing a new P O C D. And, you know, we're probably a year out from that. But we don't even know, basically, what the taxpayers of the Mount Monroe would like to do with that piece of property, or see what development is down there in Stevenson. We have no, we have no, we don't know.
I'm sure the taxpayers of Monroe would love to see a number of things there. I know the taxpayers of Monroe would love to see Trader Joe's there.
Right, we really don't know that.
No, no, I, I, I understand that. But, but...
And so I, and I understand that the need that you, Mr. Kimball says for property there. But I just want to clarify that it was brought as a B two, or is mine being brought as a B two, or is it a B two as it stands right now?
With a zoning contingency.
And this, this here, this B three district is something that is totally, that doesn't really apply to that property until we grant that anyway.
Correct.
Right. So I'm saying, we're setting something up that we can have this all over the town, not just there. It could be at certain other parcels in the town, so we can come inform this commission and grant this, if we can, and apply for this.
Anyone, we could apply to...
I just, I just want to clarify on that, that there's other parcels in the town that this could apply to. Not just Stevenson. There is other parcels in the town.
This commission would have to approve that.
I know that. That's what I'm saying. But I mean, this stands alone on itself.
Yes.
You know, because you keep referring back to the Stevenson uses for the Stevens.
I think the point he's trying to make, correct me if I'm wrong, the Stevenson lumber property obviously has a lot of...
Uniqueness to it.
Uniqueness to itself, and a solution to itself, which is different than other places in town. I guess that's the point he's trying to drive home.
And I understand that point. And that's why, when we looked at how to, how to unleash or maximize or capitalize on the uniqueness of that property, we had to create a mechanism to do so. This was the path that we chose as a mechanism to do so.
All right, that's all, yeah.
I'm not sure how you, the three uses that you're proposing are so different, and I'm not sure how these came about. I, just to refresh my memory, these are not, they're allowed, certain, some of these are allowed, or similar uses are allowed in other districts.
So none of those uses are currently allowed in any districts? They're not defined?
Well, similar, like agricultural and that sort of thing.
Sure. Agricultural uses are permitted in residential zones. What we tried to do with, with the creation of this specific use would be to apply it to a, to an area of the community. So that's the indoor cultivation facility, which is essentially an indoor agricultural use, right? You couldn't, someone couldn't apply to do that in an industrial district or a business district, because it's not, the regulations are clear. If it's not expressly permitted, it's prohibited. So what we're trying to do is create a mechanism so that if, if someone wants to invest in Monroe and look at some infrastructure that exists and say, I want to grow, do an indoor bib lettuce aquaponics farm, there may be a perfect home for them here. It's, it's, it's creating, you know, we talked about a lot of different uses in all of our previous discussions, informally and with the subcommittee. But these are the uses that we think are the most, you know, potentially viable that we'd want to have incorporated into this type of, this type of...
Yeah. And I'm not sure how the, you know, creation of a long-term parking place, facilities, you know, it won't magically make all the, you know, non-compliant, you know, RVs and so forth magically disappear off people's properties and, because they're not paying anything for it on their own property.
True.
So that, I don't know if that's a solution, but, and the other, my only other comment was about, you know, if we approved this as a new zone, is it realistic, you know, to assume that we potentially would never approve it for a specific site? Is that really, you know, realistic?
It's a legis, it's a legislative action that this commission has the discretion to entertain.
And that we would never be challenged for anything like that.
Well, obviously, you're making a positive statement by creating a zone that you intend to use it.
Exactly.
So I mean, it does have that challenge. And that's one of the pitfalls of a floating zone. There is some, you do have legislative latitude, but you're making a positive statement and creating a zone that you intend to use.
And frankly, to, to, to your point, and I think Chairman Porter made this point before, and Chairman Ambrosi did, you know, this application is to change the regs to adopt a B three district. And generally, those things stand on their own, and there's no discussion about specific properties. But this is a unique application, because we're talking about a unique, we're talking about creating a mechanism, as we've said, a mechanism to apply to a unique piece of property, which is why we, why, which is why this presentation has included so much on Stevenson lumber. Typically, it would not. But we're, we're being completely forthright, and we want to have this dialogue with the commission, because we want to do this collaboratively with the commission.
Michael?
I think you were just talking about Commissioner Ambrosi was concerned that these might pop up all over town. Do you have to have the minimum lot area 10 acres? Could that be increased? Thirty acres or 20 acres? Could that be increased to thirty acres or twenty acres?
We could certainly, yeah. It's about forty.
I mean, if you bated the minimum lot acre to twenty-five acres, then that would limit the areas of town that it would be applicable to.
Under the current zoning map or land map, but, you know, people can always combine lots to acquire a large enough piece of property to meet the requirement.
Did you think of the planned development district? Is that on?
So, the?
Instead of a B three?
So, the planned development districts is a zoning tool that personally, I think is very powerful. And I think it's something that gives the commission an incredible amount of discretion and oversight to look at a specific application and create something. I think we may have even talked about that in informal discussion in the past. Newtown has S Ds, Shelton has P Ds, West Hartford has an S D D process. There are very vibrant communities that use these tools very successfully. And I think in some of our discussions, you know, our new planner coming from Shelton had a lot of experience in P Ds. And I think some of that experience, and I think over time, there's been instances of that zoning process being abused in some communities, which sometimes puts that in a negative light. Now, personally, I believe that if a commission takes on, takes on that type of zoning process with their eyes open, you have all the discretion and you can prevent that from being abused. But I think there has been instances in some communities where over time it gets abused and it changes the nature of things. So, I think that's why generally, we didn't, when we first talked to the commission, there was not well received to possibly do a P D D. Frankly, I love them. I think they're great, I think it's a great tool for commissions to adopt and really does create opportunities to better, you know, to better applications, to require additional and to give some, you know, create some additional opportunities. So, I'm for P Ds. But I think based on some of the discussions that we've had collectively to date, we didn't think that was a viable option and we didn't think Monroe was quite ready for it yet.
Oh, so you thought because this is more restrictive? Or because this is more formal than a P D D?
This is more, this is more consistent with the current zoning practices in the community. And it's less of a substantive change to how applications could be received and reviewed.
But a P D D has a lot more clothes on it.
It does. I'm a huge proponent of P Ds. But the general feedback we got was Monroe's not ready yet.
Where'd you get that from?
Where'd you get that from?
Well, we can look at it as an option.
Mike, what do you think about that?
I have reservations on it.
On the P Ds?
I've dealt with it for over twenty years. And it's, it's been a quagmire. It's been a mixed blessing. It could be so radical in a good sense, but it could also be radical in a bad sense. You have to be very careful, you have to think it out. I'm very apprehensive, that's his great position.
All right, that was my only thought, thank you.
I just have a few questions or comments. Your commercial long-term parking, you have a minimum timeframe of thirty days. Are you proposing any upper end limit on, on storage? Or is it just indefinite? Someone could just rent a space and just park there forever?
I mean, if it's, we'd certainly be happy to see how the commission feels about it. But if somebody wanted to park an RV in a space that isn't their driveway for five or ten years and is in a place that's safe and secure and, you know, I don't think, I don't think there'd be an issue with, with doing so.
And this could be an in-and-out type setup to take it out for the weekend, bring it back market during the week?
Exactly, right. It's the annual trip to drive across country and you need to, yeah.
Or taking boats, whatever. You said that you were considering removing construction equipment from the list of potential uses?
Yes, we'd be happy to, Commissioner Felt.
And you also said it would be registered vehicles?
Yes.
Or boats?
Yes.
What about, how would this tie in with the requirement to have a minimum fourteen hundred square feet of building?
So, we just included that as part of, since it's part of the existing B one, B two regulations. You know, I think?
So, there would be a building connected to the potential commercial long-term parking?
Yes, there'd have to be.
Good answer. Indoor cultivation, you know, there was some concern about marijuana, which is prohibited in town, specifically prohibited. So, it's understood that that's?
Oh, yeah, this wouldn't, this wouldn't modify that prohibition in any way, shape, or form.
Could you elaborate a little bit about your power generation and commercial utility facilities? Like, give us some examples of what that entails?
That could be a solar farm. That could be, you know, with the proximity to the high-pressure gas main, that could be a gas generation facility potentially.
So, we could potentially have something like they built in Oxford on this site?
If the commission approved that. But it wouldn't be something, you know, I think we put those as special exception uses.
Why did they build an Oxford? I have no idea what that was.
It was in the news a couple of years ago. They built a gas-fired, power plant.
You mean the thing you can see from everywhere?
Raised a lot of concern with the local.
That's how I tell my kids where I live.
Really?
Yeah.
By the power plant?
Yeah, mine will be by the power plant. They can see it from where they are.
You're not talking about putting wind generators up here or anything like that, are you?
It's a potential.
Potential, sure. I mean, if the, wind generation is, wind generation is a very specific thing because it needs sustained winds. You need to put up a met tower for years to gather that data. But potentially, I mean, if it, for green energy, if it was a viable option.
Yeah, it's John Kimball. This, you know, as Will's pointed out before, things like the Oxford power plant, those get thrown in by the siting council in many communities. But, you know, what we really looked at was the upper shelf of this as a great opportunity for solar, that was the first thought. And then we said, "Well, we're next to a gas line, we should throw that in." Partly because, you know, that power plant generates about, has got a value of about $200 million and generates seven million in tax revenue. And then Oxford could look at our power plant instead of us just looking at it. I can see theirs from my house. I'd like to build one on our site, put seven million in our coffers and have them look at our power plant, so that, but we're flexible on that. It's not a requirement, again, because we have dark sky compliant rules in town. So, they wouldn't actually see ours.
Mr. Soli, moving on to the exception on the twenty percent limit on outdoor storage. The outdoor storage would still have, it's still an accessory use.
Correct.
So, it would have to be tied to some primary or principal use on a piece of property.
That's correct.
What are some potential?
It does, it's an accessory use. Yeah.
No, no, the commercial vehicles, that's why we created a commercial, yeah. Yes, if there was, you know, that's why we created a commercial vehicle to be a commercial vehicle parking area. Because that's not considered, we don't want that considered outdoor storage. That's independent, that's why we created that, right?
This is outdoor storage as an accessory use?
That's correct, yes.
What would be some potential uses, outdoor storage? Tied to what principal use?
It would probably be tied to some sort of either manufacturing or your manufacturing use. Where if, again, if they could get someone to come in and manufacture trusses and those trusses could be stored outside, something comparable to what was done before. But it would be likely something in that, in that nature. And it would need to be, you know, we can certainly work to elaborate or expand upon how that outdoor storage could be applied. For example, years ago, when there was a kiln-dried firewood facility on this property that was given a cease and desist and forced to move, we went through and wrote a regulation to allow for that use to be permitted in the I two district. Because at the time, it was gonna move into a lot in the business park. As part of that application process, we created a provision where that specific use could have additional outdoor storage area for that use. And those additional outdoor storage areas had specific supplemental requirements that had to be met to ensure that it wasn't gonna impact, you know, proper measures were in place for stormwater and water quality and storage and things like that. So, that could be something, again, that could potentially be applied to this property. And similar to that, we could create a mechanism for additional outdoor storage area, which subject to the approval by the commission, with additional requirements that could potentially be in place.
Okay, moving on to your bulk dimensional requirements. I'm just curious, primarily the zone boundary with residential zones. You know, you're proposing that this B three zone have B one, B two and numerous, what I would consider to be industrial-type uses. Even some I two or I three uses all bundled into this zone. Why did, what was your thought process in picking the separation distance from a residential zone?
Part of it was looking at how the site's kind of been, was how, again?
Specific.
But as outlined and as testified to, it was in the record, we looked at, you know, how some of the current operations were in their relationship to residential zones. And the existing Trust Tech building on this particular property was about fifty feet away from the property line, the residential zone boundary. So, we were somewhat mimicking what was previously operated on, on this particular property.
Well, we agree that that was a pre-existing non-conforming use.
We do.
That use could remain. But we're talking about a use in a B three zone anywhere in town. So, I think you should take another look at the separation distance from a residential zone.
We can certainly look at that.
Actually, just John Kimball again. The only, what we like, we actually can easily accommodate the, expanding the separation distances. The only exception that we would try and add, a quirk that we'd like to throw in is the railroad track here is also residential zone boundary. So, we would like to try and provide an exception to the residential zone setback standards relative to residential zone railroad beds.
Or the other, another possibility, and I'm not saying this is something that the commission would endorse, I'm just saying, you know, another possibility would be getting your portion of the land zoned up to the rail. Or is it currently zoned B two up to the rail?
It's zoned B two up to the rail. But, so, and that's the thing, we agree with Will's comment that there should be greater setbacks in the, in any of the industrial uses relative to residential, normal residential properties. All we're trying to do is provide, all we wanna ask the commission is that you try to work with us in providing a carve-out for the residential property that's currently the rail bed. All right?
Okay. You already said that the canopy, which was just a carryover from a B one, front yard setbacks, it'd be two.
Is that in B two also?
It's only in B two.
Oh, it's only in B two?
All right, but that's not something that we would consider. Comment from staff that I'd like to address again regarding the fact that this proposed zone has all but maybe four or five of our permitted uses included. Ranging from, you know, our B one least intense business uses all the way up to I three most intense industrial uses. A wide range. You know, staff commented that maybe the lower end and the upper end should be taken off and that should be condensed a little to make it more of a uniform or somewhat uniform use throughout the zone in intensity. Comments on that?
Well, I think we've, you know, again, I think we've tried to create something that can create some opportunity based on the myriad of potential uses which could use the property and to give some flexibility. You know, we're certainly happy to go back and maybe evaluate that a little bit more, see if there are other things that we could possibly address to address that concern. But again, from a planning standpoint, we were trying to look at this as, you know, given the uniqueness of where this could apply and then how to, you know, create the best opportunity for, to incentivize redevelopment, that was our primary focus. I think if there are specific uses that this commission feels, you know, strongly, that wouldn't apply to not only, you know, to, you know, generally in town, but specifically even to Stevenson Lumber, we'd certainly like to get that feedback so we can maybe, you know, look at making those modifications as part of a revised, you know, response to tonight's hearing and staff's comments, a formal response.
What do you think the possibility or probability moving forward would be of maybe splitting the property and only applying for a B three zone in a portion of the property rather than an entire property?
It's a possibility. We can certainly look at it, yeah. We can certainly look at that.
All right, and then also, one of staff comments addressed supplemental standards for some of these proposed uses.
Yeah, we can certainly look at, we can, we can look at staff's suggestions and we can work with staff to come up with some supplemental uses for the new special exception permits we're proposing. We're happy to work on that and submit some revised information for the commission to consider.
Okay, I have no other comments right now. Anybody else come up with anything?
No, sir.
Popped into your head? All right, well, I am gonna turn this over to the public, but before doing that, I just want to, at the request of some people that submitted letters, they asked that the letters be read, so.
Sure.
I'm just gonna read a couple of them. First, from West Cog, they just had a couple of comments. It is unclear if the proposed text, it's unclear in the proposed text if any property over ten acres, no matter the current zoning designation, can apply for a business District Three zoning designation. Their other comment is, "An explanation regarding how this floating zone is intended to work could be advantageous to include directly in the B three section of the zoning regulations." Then, you know, we notified the neighboring municipalities and we got two letters back from Newtown. First one was from the Pootituck Watershed Association. We are writing to comment on the mandatory referral from the Town of Monroe regarding the zoning text amendment. I'm not going to go through it, they spell out what their mission statement is. While the word Pootituck appears in our name, the association has interest in conducting studies in all the watersheds in Newtown. We note that this application has potential application to the Stevenson Lumber site which borders the Halfway River, the boundary between Monroe and Newtown and the area. The Pootituck Watershed Association has been involved in monitoring water quality in the Halfway for the last fifteen years and find that the water quality there is the best of any stream in Newtown. We are also aware that the Halfway contains a reproducing natural population of wild cold-water fish species. Given the water quality and biodiversity of the Halfway River, we feel that many of the uses, the B three zone creation, which would be totally inappropriate for the Stevenson site on the Halfway River. The Halfway is a relatively undeveloped watershed and should be protected. We strongly encourage the Town of Newtown to respond no to the new B three zone proposal. Thank you for your consideration. And from the Town of Newtown Planning Department, "On April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Newtown Planning and Zoning Commission authorized the chairman to write a letter in opposition to the proposed Town of Monroe Zone Text Amendment Application R A A two thousand nineteen dash oh five. The petition requests a zone text amendment creating Business District Three. Planning Zoning Commission's main concern is that the new district could be applied to the former Stevenson Lumber property, which is adjacent to and partially in the floodplain of the Halfway River. The Town of Newtown has conducted water quality studies on the rivers in town for the past eleven years. The Halfway River is the cleanest river in Newtown." The Halfway River is the cleanest river in Newtown and it is our benchmark for water quality. The river contains a viable wild trout population, which should be protected. The commission has received correspondence from Trout Unlimited and the Pootituck Watershed Association expressing concern and opposition to the zone boundary change and its potential impact of the water quality of the Halfway River. The zone text amendment proposal will result in the creation of a new business district with several uses that have the potential to negatively impact the water quality of the Halfway River. Also, the new zoning district, B3, virtually allows every business and industrial use in one zone. Again, this is especially significant since the application states on page three, "An application to Stevenson Lumber site." The Newtown Planning and Zoning Commission would like to go on record as strongly opposing this request for a zone text amendment and is supported in this opposition by the Pootituck Watershed Association, the Candlewood chapter of Trout Unlimited, and the Newtown Director of Planning, George Benson, who is an experienced water quality scientist. Unfortunately, we have fewer and fewer pristine streams in Fairfield County and the Halfway River has been documented as one of the cleanest in our area and must be protected for future impacts." So as requested, I read those letters into the record. Now, nope, not your turn yet.
Stretch my legs.
All right, so is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone with any general questions or comments? Mr. Leniker?
My name is Joel Leniker. I reside at 70 Huntingtown Road in the Town of Monroe. I'll have a couple of general comments. I applaud the applicant in the sense of coming up, coming up with another way or another look at some opportunities in the Town of Monroe. This site has sat dormant for a long period of time. If this zoning designation allows us to attract more business that we feel is important to our community and will not create a detrimental impact to the community via environmental concerns and things like that, then I would urge the commission to take the big-picture look at it and incorporate it as part of your planning charge. Clearly, this is a planning issue. I'd like to stay as a planning issue or mention that it's a planning issue as opposed to a, a specific applicant that wishes to do something with a parcel of property to make money. Unfortunately, from my understanding of, of planning, is sometimes you need a vehicle as the applicant has presented in which to, for them to make some money and create this balance, to bring the property back onto the tax rolls or to increase its value on the tax rolls. I don't have an answer for you. I would be concerned about the, the river. I don't know much about it, but I would be concerned certainly about the environmental impact. I might also ask when you look at, and I only got to see a brief picture of one of the applicant's slides that showed, I think, three designated areas for this proposed B3 area as it's being proposed. It would be interesting to see, you know, maybe take that into consideration in the bigger picture, you know, are there three opportunities here? What should those be and what would those be? How would that balance happen in this, in the Town of, Town of Monroe? You know, one I noticed down on the Route 25, along the bottom of Route 25, Trumbull border, there is a big parcel there that, you know, that I know there's other applications or considerations for some of that property around there, and I'm not familiar with all the details. But does that help that applicant, not applicant, but does that help our vision for what we would like to do in the community? We are sandwiched between, let's face it, Monroe is a suburban community sandwiched between Bridgeport and, let's say, Danbury, and what is our role? We see Newtown growing leaps and bounds along its 84 access. We see Trumbull that has grown exponentially. They are now struggling with their Trumbull Mall and, you know, what is the, the future of retail and what is, how are they attracting business and keeping business? It's certainly a challenge. I don't know what we have for Monroe. What is going to be our hook? What is going to be our attraction from a planning point of view to future people? And when I say planning, I don't mean necessarily money-generating industry. I also mean, you know, the residential side of it, the perhaps, you know, some unique element that makes us unique, and I realize that you're probably going to do your POCD pretty soon. So I'm kind of, I, I don't oppose this application, nor do I completely support it, but I do, I'm, I'm going to leave you with one message, is that it clearly is an important planning component, as you all probably figured out by now, and I would urge you to take the time to really play out the good and the bad. I think you made some references to certain designations, you know, with your experience coming to the board, just make sure you, you play it out, not just for this application, but any opportunity. Certainly, how we grow food today has changed drastically. You know, we have an opportunity, and I know that hydroponically, people are concerned that it's going to be medical marijuana, or marijuana's going to get approved, and then all of a sudden, you know, do we want to be the community that's growing marijuana? Well, you know, there's lots of communities across the United States growing marijuana right now. Depends on how it's presented and how you zone it and how you make use of it, but I would focus more on the, you know, food, you know, how we build, how we, how are we growing our food? And if our regulations don't allow for some of these things, then maybe this is an opportunity. Or maybe you go back and look at some of your regs in your zone, your different zones and say, maybe now, looking at this, we can apply some of these applications to a B2 or I've been around, I've been gone from it for a while, so I don't really know all the, the, the parameters of your existing zone regs. But if you look at that map, that planning map, as you all know, it looks like there's three spots where they would like to do a B3. It does support, you know, one applicant. I guess the question is, is that, is this going to work or duck out well with our, with our community? And that's going to require more time and research and, you know, looking maybe out of state and see what other communities have been doing with this and, you know, what do we want to do? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a general question or comment? All right, back to you, Mr. Soli.
You know, just, we really appreciate the, the dialogue and the feedback from the commission and obviously from staff, and I think, I think there's been a lot of good conversation this evening, and what we'd like to do is obviously leave the hearing open. We're going to be providing some, you know, formal response to Will's comments, which summarizes some of the things we talked about tonight, and some additional modifications to our proposed regulation to address some of the other concerns and comments that kind of came from, from staff comments and even from, from the general public. So we appreciate that. We appreciate the commission's time, and I guess we'd request to continue the hearing to, we probably need more than a week to provide some responses.
Because there's five weeks in May, our next meeting is actually three weeks from tonight.
So we'd have to provide a response by...
We'd have to respond by the 29th. Two weeks from yesterday.
To be on the June 5th meeting?
6th.
6th? Yeah, we can, we'd like, I guess we could request to continue the hearing to that June 6th meeting, and then if we're unable to get our responses in, we'll push it out another two weeks.
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue to June 6th. Lane 9, PM. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
I know what Ryan's going to do.
Can we just change one thing just to satisfy the needs?
Okay, we're back, 9:25. Okay, item number nine, Site Development Plan and Permit Amendment Modifications. We have none. Item number 10, Time Extensions, None. 11 Bond Releases, None. Item 12, Pending Minute, Meeting Minutes for May 2nd, 2019. There's a typo at the top of the sheet. The minutes say April 18th, but it's, these are actually the minutes for the May 2nd meeting. So, we have a motion.
Move to accept the minutes, May 2nd?
Yes.
Meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission, as drafted, with the change of date.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any, let's see, who do we have on this?
I believe I was at...
I believe you are not here. Porter O'Reilly, Lisi Ambrosi, and Mr. Condon, you are seated for this and a couple of deliberations.
Whoa.
All right. So, do we have any, any comments? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, next up, Pending Application to Liberations and Determinations. First up is SEP 2018-12, File Number 1607A575 Monroe Turnpike, Child Daycare Center. This is an application for a special exception permit, Site Development Plan for a child daycare center with a maximum of 39 children and six staff to be housed within an existing one-story building, including parking, stormwater damage, exterior fenced playground, and other site-related improvements, as well as interior and exterior building improvements. It's a one-acre parcel on Route 111. Subject property is located in an RF1 for which a zone boundary change was recently approved to change it to a B1. The lands surrounding the property on the same side as Monroe Turnpike are RF1 and consist of wooded floodplain wetlands. Parcel's located directly across Monroe Turnpike, are zoned B1, and are developed as commercial properties. Site includes two non-conforming curb-cut driveways and an asphalt-paved parking area. The southerlymost curb cut is proposed to be eliminated and the northerly curb cut is proposed to be modified. Site is not within 500 feet of a town boundary, not within 100-year floodplain, and it's not subject to a conservation easement or other restrictive covenant. The applicant completed the required notices to the Public Health, Commissioner of Public Health and the Aquarium and Water Company. Site includes wetlands and regulated upland review areas, and they have received Inland Wetlands Commission approval on March 13th, 2019. There was a favorable advisory review by the Monroe Architectural Review Board on March 19th. We held a public hearing, which was opened and adjourned on February 7th, reconvened and adjourned on March 7th, and April 4th, and reconvened and closed on April 18th. Commission finds the following: Proposed Child Daycare Center is a permitted special exception permit use. The proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development and that it proposes a permitted and zoning compliant use. The location nature, height and design of the proposed modified facilities are consistent with existing facilities. New lighting will be minimal and dark sky compliant. New commercial signage will be conforming as to location, size, and orientation. Existing off-street parking is proposed to be expanded to accommodate the new child daycare center. The design of the proposed action has incorporated the comments and recommendations of town staff and applicable reviewing agencies. And the proposed use involves development of private property, changes to which are not anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. So, any additional items anyone would like to discuss? Porter, O'Reilly, Lisi, Ambrosi, and Condon. Anything?
No, sir.
It goes good? Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to grant special exemption permit, SEP 2018-12 Child Daycare Center 575 Monroe Turnpike, move to accept the permit as drafted.
Second.
We have a permit, we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, next up, RAA 2019-04, File Number 1005E, Zoning Regulations Text Amendment, Alcohol Service Eligibility. Okay, Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission is considering a zoning text amendment as proposed by the commission, amending existing zoning 2.1.1, 6.7, 1.9.12, and 10.1 regarding regulations pertaining to alcohol sales and service eligibility. To refresh everyone's memory, this involves some changes and some definitions. It eliminates the minimum number of seats required for alcohol service in a full-service restaurant. Eliminates 1,500-foot separation distance for package stores. Was there a fourth? Those were the three main items.
Oh, and did you talk about the definition addition?
I talked about definitions here.
And the use-specific, right?
Okay, pardon me?
And the use being use-specific.
I can't hear you.
Use-specific.
And you said, you mentioned the use-specific, right?
Yeah. Notice was sent out to the towns of Easton, Newtown, Shelton, Trumbull, and Oxford, and no response was given by any of them. Notice of the proposed zoning text amendment was sent to Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, and Western Connecticut Council of Governments, all responding that there was no regional significance to this amendment. Notice of the proposed text amendment was sent to the Connecticut Commissioner of Public Health and the Aquarium and Water Company, and no responses were received. Commission has considered the proposed zoning text amendment at a duly noted public hearing opening and closing on April 18th, 2019. Commission finds that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the goals and recommendations of the 2010 Town of Monroe Plan of Conservation and Development, including the furtherance of the goals and recommendations of the POCD in regard to maintaining a good quality of life through the proper administration of permitted uses, encouraging improvements to the economic base through fair competition practices, eliminating barriers unrelated to health and safety considerations.
And if, if adopted, it would have an effective date of May 28th, 2019?
Okay. Any other comments? Inclusions, exclusions to be made?
No, sir.
For the draft? No, you're not deliberating.
Oh.
Porter, O'Reilly, Lisi, Ambrosi, and Condon.
No, no other suggestions.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve -O for zoning regulation text amendment as drafted.
A second.
Effective May 28th.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay. Next up, RAA 2019-03, File Number 1004E, Zoning Regulations Text Amendment Minor Site Plan. Planning and Zoning Commission is considering a zoning text amendment as proposed by the commission, amending and establishing procedural and permit regulations pertaining to the review and approval of minor site plan approvals as delegated to administrative staff and related amendments affecting and changing existing 2.2.1, 7.1, 7.3.2, 7.4, and 7.5. Notice was sent to the adjacent municipalities of Easton, Newtown, Shelton, Trumbull, and Oxford with no responses. Notice was sent out to Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, and Western Connecticut Council of Governments, all responding that there was no regional significance. Notice was sent to the Connecticut Commissioner of Public Health and the Aquarium and Water Company, and no responses were received. Public hearing was opened and closed on May 2nd, 2019. Commission hereby finds that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the goals and recommendations of the 2010 Town of Monroe Plan of Conservation and Development, including the furtherance of the goals and recommendations of the POCD in regard to maintaining a good quality of life through the proper administration of... of permitted uses, updating permitted land uses consistent with standards of current practice, and encouraging improvement to the economic base through streamlining of the land use development permit process. Rick, I believe you had some comments on some of the text.
Yeah, that was discussed with staff, and that will be incorporated.
Please enlighten the Commission, they have to weigh in on it in both.
We, I am recommending to add on page two, after paragraph B, site plan approval or a minor site plan approval as may be issued by the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner. Page five, under paragraph four, in evaluating minor site plan applications, the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner may seek the advice and opinion. Beneath that, under submission of application C, the Commission or the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner, in the case of a minor site plan, has been approved. On page six, under paragraph four, line D, the Commission or Town Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner, in the case of an application for a minor site plan, may require the submission of additional information as deemed necessary. Page seven, under E, minor site plan application process, paragraph three, the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner may require an advisory review. On page ten, under seven point three two, paragraph D, the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner may waive certain application submission. Page eleven, under D, as approved by the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner in a quantity and format as required by said approval. Under seven point four two, construction, or in the case of a minor site plan by the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner. The next sentence after that, all site alteration, construction shall be in accordance with the approved final plans as signed by the Commission chair or the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner, as the case may be. And on page fourteen, this is the last one, D, the Planning and Zoning Administrator or Town Planner may grant one or more extensions of the time to implement and approve minor site plan approval in increments of six months or less.
So is this a correct statement saying that the only change is that anywhere it said the Planning and Zoning Administrator, we added four Town Planner?
That is correct.
So I guess the request was made by someone in town that we add, in addition to Will being the one who can grant a over-the-counter approval on minor site plans, that Rick will also be added to be able to...
The process, yeah. It's part of the process.
To able to approve them. So, discussion?
That has to be done jointly, or one or the other?
One or the other.
Okay.
Correct? That's correct.
Okay.
Chair, will you entertain a motion?
I move to approve R A A two thousand nineteen dash oh three zoning regulation text amendments, minor site plan as drafted with the modifications so mentioned.
Second.
Do we have approval, or a motion, we have a second? Any, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, there's nothing else to deliberate? We're not going home yet. Item number fourteen, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of reviewing the proposals submitted in response to the two thousand twenty P O C D, updated R F P, and for discussion regarding the vendor respondents and vendor selection consistent with the exempt records in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section one dash two ten B, and to invite the Town Planner and Planning and Zoning Administrator.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session, nine forty-one. Would everyone please vacate the room?
Close the door.
Do you want me to stay correct?
It'll only be a couple minutes. Yeah, I would like you to stay for a little, for the...
I'd like to make a motion to come out of the executive session.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back, nine fifty-three. Do we have to recap the executive session?
No, this indicates no vote was taken.
No vote was taken. Correspondents other received, none. Commission reports. Chairman's report. We have, we have a situation in town. We discussed this previously, it's coming up again. Z E O, as you know, is the only person designated to enforce our regulations, and when he goes on vacation, there's no one to sign off on certain things or take care of the administrative duties that are assigned specifically to him. So this is a motion or a resolution for the Z E O Designated Agent dated May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, herein after the Commission, is empowered to adopt, amend, and enforce zoning and subdivision regulations in the Town of Monroe, delegate such authority as it deems administratively prudent. Now therefore, be it resolved, consistent with Connecticut General Statute eight dash three and Article nine of the Town of Monroe Zoning Regulations, the Commission hereby designates the Planning and Zoning Administrator as Designated Agent to the Zoning Enforcement Officer.
That's you. We discussed it.
We discussed it, it never, it never, never went through. So let's start with a motion. We have a motion.
A motion to approve the Z E O Designated Agent, May sixteenth. Where is it?
Resolution.
Resolution.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion? Avrino, you're back, seated.
Oh, it's about time.
All right, everyone understand what this is?
Yes, sir.
It's giving Will the authority to act in Joe's place in his absence.
Got that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Call the roll.
Main, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Congratulations, Will, you got a motion.
There you go, Will. You get the Z E O car when you go out?
Do any of the Commissioners have anything to report?
No, sir.
Rick?
Okay, believe it or not, no Z B A meeting until July second. May and June has been canceled. Nothing from the Siding Council. Regulations Subcommittee been met on May sixth to discuss, to interview the consultants, as Chairman indicated. Zoning Enforcement Program, thirty-one Lorain Drive and sixty-nine Osborne Lane. Nothing on the zoning citation. P O C D, the Chairman discussed that tonight in executive session, and no special meetings for the balance of the month of May. And the Building Department issued three new single-family warrants. So year-to-date, a total of four.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.